Okay, so we'll call the meeting order. Let's salute the flag. A pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
America and to the republic.
For which it stands. One nation. Under God. End of this. Liberty and justice.
Justice for. Ally, can you please read in the certification of compliance?
The time, date, and location of this meeting was published in the Asbury Park Press and posted on the bulletin board in the office of the Township of Lakewood at least forty-eight hours in advance. The public has the right to attend this meeting and reasonable comprehensive minutes of this meeting will be available for public inspection. This meeting meets the criteria of the Open Public Meetings Act.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield. Mr. Stern.
Here.
Mr. Sable. He was here, wasn't he? Oh, he's come late. I'm sorry. Mr. Flans.
I told you something. Yeah.
Mr. Herzl.
Here.
Mr. Renner. Mr. Isaacson.
Here.
Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Mr. Rancic. Okay, I would, I would like to remind everyone to self-mute themselves at this point. To avoid background noise. And as we take the applications, whomever is presenting at that time can unmute themselves so that they can speak. And then when the board is ready to discuss, all the presenters can mute and the board can unmute themselves and speak together.
Okay, thank you. Okay, swearing in of professionals. Mr. Jackson.
All right, Mr. Vogt, do you swear or affirm the testimony we'll give before this board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, and I, I take it that Mr. Magno will not be participating? I don't see him on here anymore. Okay, so, all right.
Let the record reflect that, Mr. I'm sorry, let the record reflect that Mr. Sable has arrived.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Mr. Vogt has taken the oath as our engineer and planner. Mr. Herzl, back to the agenda.
Okay, on to public hearings, number one, Ally.
Yes, there's no resolutions on tonight, so we're starting with public hearing. The first up is SD twenty-four thirty-two for Yehuda Rothberg. This is a minor subdivision on Goods.
Hello.
Hello.
Has joined the meeting.
We have Mr. Sable here. This is SD twenty-four thirty-two for Yehuda Rothberg. It's a minor subdivision to realign lot, realign lot lines on Goods, Goods Road. So there are currently two lots and there are proposed to be two lots. I believe Mr. Schamont's office is the one presenting on this application.
Okay, thank you, Ally, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Terry. Do you want to go through the report?
Thank you, Chairman. As indicated on page three, under zoning comments, the application, projects in the R twelve, there is a variance of with respect to minimum locked width. Um, we're not sure, but there's a chance that off-street parking relief is going to be necessary on new lots seventy point oh two. We'll get testimony on that shortly. And then your design waivers, unwavers are necessary with respect to sidewalk along the Goods Road project frontage as well as street trees along the frontage.
Did I hear correctly? They don't know the sidewalks, huh?
They're not currently shown. I'm thoroughly impressed with them, sir.
Okay, is that it, Terry?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Who is the engineer, Mr. Schamont?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Okay.
Mr. Schamont, I see you're here on behalf of the applicant. Is there a professional here on behalf of the applicant as well? An attorney, I'm sorry?
No, you've just, just me.
Just you, okay. And did please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony we'll give before this board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And Mr. Schamont, you are a professional surveyor and engineer?
Yes.
Mr. Herzl, do you recognize Mr. Schamont?
Yes, yes, he's been by the board.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Schamont, you want to tell us about the application and what variance relief you request and, and the reasons for saying?
Uh, yeah, the owner of lot seventy point oh two was, was trying to expand their lot in planning for some future improvements to the property. They're constrained in the rear, the rear two-thirds of the properties is constrained by a riparian buffer, so they approached their neighbor hoping to buy additional frontage to widen the lot and make it more developable. They were only able to obtain an additional ten feet to the, to the property, putting them at eighty-five feet, five feet shy of the ninety feet that's required for the zone. But it seems as though that's the, that's the maximum amount of property the adjoining was willing to, was willing to sell them. So they'd like to go forward with the eighty-five foot wide lot.
It, it's currently seventy-five and you're going up to eighty-five, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Are there any other variances besides the front? Width of the lot?
That's the only, that's the only variance.
One question, Chairman, if I could. Are you seeking parking relief on lot seventy point oh two?
Well, I think right now there, I, I can't say that we have four parking spaces on that lot. When the time comes to redevelop the lot, of course, we would be providing required parking, but at this time, at this time, we'd like to sit tight with the existing asphalt driveway that would provide two spaces.
So if the board grants approval, it'll be conditioned upon meeting the parking requirements when that lot's developed?
I, that's what we were hoping the board would do.
All right, do, do you have testimony on, on the design waivers?
I'm sorry, again?
Do you have any testimony or rationale on the design waivers? You're not showing sidewalk or street trees.
Has joined the meeting.
You mean proposed sidewalk and proposed street trees?
Correct.
Yeah, we were, again, we're, we were hoping we could bundle all those improvements up at the time when they, when, when the lot is, is to be redeveloped. So the rationale there was we intend on providing them down the road, but we were hoping we could forestall those improvements until the, until the future improvements come along.
All right, so if the board's amenable, you don't necessarily need waivers per se because of sidewalk and trees to be installed.
Somebody has to mute over there. There's a lot of feedback. I'm sorry. Terry, continue.
That's okay. What I was saying was if, if the board's amenable, they can simply put sidewalk and street trees in when those lots are developed and not necessarily seek a waiver.
Okay, Terry, if I got it correct, they're just subdividing, moving over the lot line, there is no building, they're not building any new houses on either lot.
That's what I'm hearing, Chairman, and I'm recommending that.
May, may I just take a step or two back here, Mr. Herzl? I just want to make sure that we make clear what we're doing here. Mr. Schamont, do you, do we have the ability to put the plan up that the applicant is, is proposing?
Would you say put it up? Can I put it up?
Well, Ally can, or you can, and, and just for the record, I don't know if you stated that it's your client or the street address or the lot and block for this property when you started.
Uh, the street address for this property?
Yes. Or the lot.
It's, it's one, it's number one thirty-six Guds Road.
One thirty-six Gud.
I think I can share the map. I can do that now momentarily if you'd like. Hold on.
Okay, and, and Mr. Schamont, Ms. Morris is getting that ready. Your, your client's name is Rothberg?
Yes.
You had said, okay, because the, the map I was looking at, I thought that the dimension was proposed at seventy-five, but we'll take a look at that in a second. You just show us what you're doing exactly.
Am I sharing?
It says it's starting to share. But nothing's come up yet. There we go.
Ah ha.
All right, now, Mr. Schamont, can you see that?
Yeah, I can. One second. Ally, you can make, she'll make it better. Thank you, Ally.
All right, now, now, as, as we look at this property, I, I see lot seventy point oh one and lot, I think it was seventy. Can we, I don't know, I just scrolled down past it.
Uh, it was seventy and seventy-one.
Seventy point, well, it says seventy point oh two and seventy point oh one, are they the lots in question here?
As proposed, yes.
Those as proposed lots.
Okay. And the dimension of the lots when they're finished will be what?
Lot seventy oh two will be eighty-five wide by three hundred deep. Lot seventy point oh one will be one forty wide by three hundred feet deep.
All right, now, lot seventy point oh one has an existing structure on there?
Yes.
And that's to remain?
Yes.
Are you doing anything, do you propose any changes with regard to lot seventy point oh one, other than taking the land off it to the left?
That's correct. That's, that's the only, there are no proposed changes to lot seventy point oh one.
Mr. Schamont, it looks like the lot on the left is, is actually already undersized with respect to width and you are making it wider.
Right.
Yes. That is exactly what I was going at, Ally. So, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know when this subdivision was done. So, but you're just improving the width. That's the only thing here, right?
That's correct.
The only other thing, Mr. Isaacson, is about the sidewalks. How do we get it, that when they, construction, that they must do the sidewalks?
Um, that's my understanding that when, whenever they're going to develop it, they're going to have to come back in front of the board again for approval.
I'm not sure if it's.
Can I just jump in here, guys? Mr. Schamont, you mentioned before that, that they need the additional ten feet because they have, the riparian buffer restricts them for future development in the back. It looks like the plan that the riparian buffer is pretty far back in the property. Had it this ten feet of additional width help with it?
Well, I mean, this way they can build a ten-foot wider house rather than a deeper house and they still have, they'll still have a little room left in their backyard to, to improve. It's just they, they were just looking to make this lot as buildable as they could and the best they can do is, is get the additional ten feet.
The riparian buffer is, I mean, it's tough to tell. It looks like it's over a hundred feet from, from, from the rear of the existing structure, so.
Uh, well, from the rear of the existing structure, it's only, it's only fifty feet from the back of the house.
Excuse me, Mr. Schamont, I'm going to interrupt you with the chairman's permission. Ms. Morris, can you put the screen on as the template? I said, we're seeing your email on there and the map is no longer.
I'm sorry, I see, I forgot that I was sharing my screen, so.
That's okay. Right, so, all right, so can you scroll down just a little so that we can see?
I need to forward the email for the meeting to the applicant. The applicant's asking me for the email for the meeting.
Okay, there we go. This, this allows us to see the dimensions. I think since we're talking about the buffer in the back, I think it would be better if you scroll down the other way.
Can, can someone else do this?
The buffer's showing up right now.
Because I'm trying to email the applicant who's trying to join the meeting.
That, that would work. If you could put my screen on, on the, on the meeting.
I can't, I can't do it. You have to do it.
Okay, so let, let me just see how I do that. I go on and where's the share screen button? Share content, there we go. Last time I did this, it didn't work out so well, so let's hope it works this time.
Last meeting worked.
It worked, John. John, you just unshow us.
There we go. Is, is my screen on there now with the map?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Now, Mr. Schamont, I think the, the questions were about the, you know, I, I see right here it says, existing lot line to be eliminated, right? So that's where you're making the property bigger, you're taking that to ten feet and you're making lot seventy point oh two from seventy-five to eighty-five.
Yes.
That's why it's light, it's seventy-five above and dark eighty-five below?
Yes.
All right, now, there were questions about the riparian buffer in the back. Is that, does that coincide with these grading things?
Yeah, if you, if you scroll back toward the front of the property, okay, that's good, right there is good. There's a dashed line which, which is about fifty feet beyond the back of the house and it says three hundred foot riparian buffer just on the left side.
Three hundred foot riparian buffer. Is it, is it, now, I'm not picking that up?
Yeah, John, I.
It's on the extreme left side of the drawing.
If you follow. I see the dotted line. Yeah.
Oh, there we go, right here, right here, I got it.
Yeah. So that only affords the property a hundred and five feet of, of by right developability. So that was the reason why the applicant wanted to, to increase its width.
All right, now, let's just go on the, over the zoning table on this. So, the, the, on, on the exist, the remaining lot seven, I'll call, I'll just call it seventy point oh one. Does that lot need variance relief to exist in the dimensions that you're proposing?
Uh, lot seventy oh one can, is, is a fully conforming lot as proposed.
All right, now, seventy point oh two, as it exists, is a conforming, is it a conforming lot?
As it exists, no.
Now, as you proposed, do you reduce the amount of the non-conformity?
Yes.
So you're.
Fifteen feet shy to five feet shy.
All right, so you're taking area from a lot that's oversized, you're not having a, an impact on it as far as making variances and you're making the conditions on lot seven, seventy point oh two better. Is that fair to say?
That's very fair to say.
All right, and, and. Go ahead, Mr. Herzl.
No, Mr. Jackson, the only thing is, I want to know if they have, when he wants to build a house on lot seventy point oh two, does he just go to the inspection department and get a permit or he has to come back to the board? I just want to make sure when there's a house there, that the sidewalk's, if we don't put it now, we're putting it in later, that's it.
Excuse me, Chairman, they do not have to come back to the board. If the subdivision's approved, they'll go to the engineering department and they'll file for plot plan approval. It's important that the board act on the application as to whether sidewalks are or are not required because that's going to get carried through in the engineering plot plan approval.
Okay, so let's, let's put it in the resolution that, that when the house is developed, they have to put a carbon sidewalk and any shade trees if they're, I don't think they're necessary, but any shade trees that are necessary.
That would be along the frontage of both lots?
Yes.
Except the existing lot seventy point oh one, that is a developed house. I believe it has sidewalk in front of it.
Uh, Mr. Vogt, I don't know if we see the, on the plans.
I can't see it on the.
We did not interpret it that way, Chairman. It didn't show for our review.
Right, I don't see any sidewalks.
Sidewalk on either lot.
I, I would like to.
Correct.
I would like to have sidewalks on both, me personally.
All right, just a point of clarity.
Mr. Herzl, just because.
Excuse me.
Mr. Herzl, excuse, excuse me, just because of this format, or, or just say nay, if any of the board members are inclined at this to allow them to not have sidewalks.
May means to.
That, that's completely confusing. I apologize. So is everybody in favor of requiring the applicant to have sidewalks at this time, subject to the final vote on?
I am.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so, Mr. Herzl, I, I suggest that we move on to the, you know, the next issue. I don't know if Mr. Mont is testifying.
Excuse me, Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to clarify something. About two minutes ago, someone mentioned the possible need of curbing. I'll defer to Mr. Schamont, but I believe that there's curb there already. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, so the waivers in question are only sidewalk and street trees.
Hi, I'm the applicant.
You have to be affirmed then.
Okay.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes, this is Yehuda Rothberg.
Yes, it is.
Mr. Rothberg, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm testimony we'll give before this board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right, Mr. Chairman, if we recognize him, ask him to proceed.
Yeah, please proceed.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't have the link to get on earlier. I just heard you talking about the sidewalks. There's currently no sidewalks.
Has joined the meeting.
There is a curb. I just want, I have no issue putting sidewalks or shade trees. Actually, one of the reasons why we wanted to get the extra ten feet is to keep as much of the backyard and the wonderful trees in the back. Just for us to go put a hundred forty feet on the other neighbor's property that we're wanting to get ten feet off of, I don't think they're going to be so willing to allow that.
Mr. Roth, which is your property?
The property, uh, the, the lot, the, the current lot that's seventy-five feet wide.
Okay, that's yours and your extra feet. And you don't own the, the next property?
No.
Okay, so I don't, I don't even think that we could correct me, Mr. Jackson, you can't force them to put if they're not doing anything on their property. He's just.
Well, I think you absolutely can make that a requirement of this subdivision request. Both properties are for, for review and if, in your discretion, you think it's appropriate to have sidewalks on both properties, this is where the opportunity is. You, you might ask Mr. Vogt, you know, if, if you'd want to allow cost and feasibility to enter into it, I don't know what a hundred, what's, what's the dimension of a hundred and forty linear feet, I guess, of sidewalk would cost, you know, that, that.
I, I couldn't tell you truthfully, John, because that would be private construction. It's a different set of numbers.
What about the takeoffs if it was municipal?
And there's a lot of trees there. It's a very wooded area.
Yeah, I mean, look, I, I, I can't give you a number off the top of my head. If you're putting sidewalk in a, a municipal rate for argument's sake of forty-five dollars square yard, whatever that ends up being, I don't know what the length of the property is. It's four-foot sidewalk with bump outs. I, I'm guessing at this point, John.
Okay, so, Mr. Herzl, I mean, unless the applicant is to show that it's economically feasible, and you don't even have to necessarily consider that, but you absolutely do have the authority to make that a condition of this approval right now, because you certainly don't have to approve the subdivision.
Okay, Mr. Roth, do you have anything else to add?
Um, I just, I do think it'll cost us a lot of money and I don't, I don't know if the people on that property will be happy. They enjoy their, you know, the real rural look to their properties though. That's, I could say, I don't think they're going to want to, and I think it'll cost us a lot of money to put in the sidewalks.
Okay.
Even if they're allowed.
Okay, and your property, you definitely agree to put the sidewalks?
One hundred percent. It's Guds Road became very, it's a fast-moving road. I want like this to be safe.
Okay, Mr. Roth, what you just said, that's the reason why usually the planning board is.
I, I understand that. I understand that, but there's a lot of different moving pieces there.
Guds became, Guds Road became very busy road.
Yes, I live not far, so I know.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Jack, we're not opening this up to the pub, right? Nobody's.
Well, we, we are having a format to the public where there's an opportunity for the public to send questions to Ms. Morris in advance. And there's an opportunity for people to email questions during the course of the meeting that they may be watching to Ms. Morris, so that's all been advertised. So I guess we would ask Ms. Morris if she has received any comments or inquiry or anything, you know, during.
Any emails, anything?
Yeah.
I have not received anything on this application.
Okay, so then we will officially close it to the public.
And, and to the applicant, and then the board would deliberate and I'd ask, you know, everybody to mute while the board writes and you ask what, what the board thinks and then we'll take a vote.
Okay, I'm ready for a vote. I'll stop you. Mr. Stern, I see you. Mr. Stern, what's your opinion? Sidewalks on just seventy? Just on, about the two numbers again? Seventy oh two, seventy point oh two, definitely sidewalk. The question's on seventy point oh one, which he doesn't own.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a suggestion? We've done this before on these subdivisions. Um, yeah, I think, I think ultimately, yeah, we definitely need curbs and sidewalk on both properties, but part of the resolution could be if and when the properties are developed, meaning that if Mr. Rothberg doesn't do anything now, he, 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 he may not put in the sidewalk. In other words, but if and when something is developed, either he comes back to the board or goes to the engineering office, either way, he's going to have to install curbing sidewalk. And maybe we put the same condition on the, on the other lot.
Um, if I could just ask Mr. Vogt about that and maybe Ms. Morris, I think the mechanics of that work is as a condition of approval, they would have to bond before they could perfect the subdivision. In other words, before they could file the deed or the map, they would either have to put the curbs and sidewalks in or have a bond for it at that time. And I don't know what Mr. Vogt's experiences with the practice of how the, the inner workings of the township are to make sure that.
I can, I can speak to that. Typically, a minor subdivision does not require a.
Has left the meeting.
Typically, a minor subdivision does not require a bond. But given that there are existing dwellings, there would be no necessarily immediate construction to precipitate the requirement for curbs and sidewalks. So in this case, it would be required to be bonded before the map could be filed and signed.
So you, since nothing's proposed to be built.
Correct.
It would, hey, the, the money would have to be put in place for it to, to happen now, more or less, Mr. Flansbrough.
Correct, and we would hold that money until they put the sidewalks in.
And that means they couldn't perfect the, the subdivision until it's, it's either bonded or done, right?
Correct.
Does it, does that address what you're saying, Mr. Flansbrough?
Yeah, yeah, right, that there would have to be a bonded place, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else from the board members would like to chime in on it? The, they agree on sidewalks or not? Mr. Stern?
I, I agree with, I agree with what Justin just said. And by my calculation, it's going for eighty-five feet. I mean, the whole thing, the whole two hundred and twenty-five feet would probably be about in the forty-five, hundred to five thousand dollar range.
That sounds right to me.
Yeah, so for eighty-five feet, I would guess it would be a little bit, little bit more than a third. It'd be about forty percent of that.
I think the discussion was to have the whole thing done. Both lots.
Yeah, no, my, my question was, can, I mean, since it's a different applicant, I mean, seventy point oh two and seventy point oh one are, are owned by different people. Can we require seventy point oh one? I mean, that's just something to work out with his neighbor.
You can, you can require them both to do it as a condition of subdivision because both lots in, in, in contention here or, or in issue or, or up, they're both part of the application because ten feet coming off of a lot seventy point oh, so that means they obviously have to sell that and they're a co-applicant and, and the board has the authority to make them both do it.
Okay, Mr. Jackson.
They're, they're not different parties. It's, it's, both parties are, are part of this application.
If the second, if the other, of the lot does not want to do the sidewalks, then the subdivision wasn't going to fit.
Then they can't, then that, they, they can't fulfill the conditions and there's no subdivision.
Excuse me, Chairman?
Yes, Terry.
I'm not sure that you would require the consent of the larger lot if the sidewalk is going within the right of way. I believe that could be constructed in the right of way without the consent of the larger lot.
I, I understand. That's, that's really right. It's township property. Okay, I think at this time, I will.
Can I just ask, I'm, I'm a little bit lost there because I, I thought, I thought that when, when, when somebody submits a, an application to the Township Engineering Office to build something on their property, the engineering office automatically requires a curbing sidewalk in front of the property. Is that, is that not the case?
That is the case, but in this case, they're, they're not proposing to submit permits for building anything.
No, that I understand, but they're not doing anything. Once they build something, they're going to have to do that regardless. Isn't that the case?
Correct, correct, but if those houses sat there for ten years, you wouldn't have sidewalk for ten years. That's the principle, I guess.
But then nothing changes. In other words, nothing changes.
Correct.
Right, so, so what, what you're using is you're using the, the fact that somebody wants to subdivide it as a tool to nudge sidewalks.
Okay. This time I would ask for a motion. Would anybody like to make a motion on this application?
Yeah. One moment. Hello?
Yes.
Uh, which public hearing are you on?
Dave, how are you? This is the first. Dave, how are you? This is the first one, S D 2432.
2432.
Yes. Mr. Jackson, can you stop sharing your screen so I can see everybody's face while we make this motion, please?
I, I'm not getting to see my face. You don't want my face anyway.
I think the control's up at the top, John.
This is.
There it is, stop sharing.
Hi, Dave, and welcome back.
Thank you. This is Rappel.
Yes.
This is Rappel, yeah. You can't vote on it, because we're finished already. We take no vote on it already.
Right, we'll skip you for this vote, and we'll take you on the next one. And the chairman, the chairman has asked for a motion on this one.
Well, with that last, that last give and take, Ally, between you and Justin, do, are we, are we requiring in the resolution that they need a bond for it, or they have to? They're gonna have to ask for it anyway when they come, they're gonna have to submit anyway, and when they come back.
That's up to whoever makes the motion.
That's up to us.
That's up to you, whatever motion you wanna make. Do we require them now, or they should bond for the whole thing? I think the consensus of the board was that we do want the sidewalks on the whole property.
Yeah, and and again, getting back to what I believe the cost is right now, I don't believe the bond is going to be that high um to uh to put it in for the curb and sidewalk, so.
I think when you're building such a big lot over there, $5,000 is not a lot of money.
No, no, agreed. So I'll I'll move to approve the application with a stipulation that there needs to be a bond for curb and sidewalk.
On which lots?
On both.
Okay, so that's 70.01, 70.02.
Excuse me, Chairman?
Yes.
I think they have curbing already. I don't think you necessarily need to bond curbing. If there's repairs that have to be done, that'll be done through the engineering department. But I think you only need to bond sidewalks.
I will amend my motion to just uh bond for sidewalk.
Mr. I.
And curb improvement as needed, as determined by the board engineer?
That's, that's correct, John. Uh, is the board granting the waiver on the street trees, yes or no?
Mr. Isaacson?
Another 500 bucks per tree.
Um.
Why I?
Okay, one second. The applicant did say on his property, he wants to put all the trees on. Mr. Rappel, that's what he said before. We definitely have on his property. Question on the other property.
So then perhaps if if the board wants to, they could waive on the existing lot only under the premise it's already enough.
Okay, Mr. Isaacson, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, knowing the area a little bit, I don't, I don't see the the shade tree necessity over there. I think there's quite a bit of trees there, and if the lots going to be improved, I'm I'm confident with the applicant that he will put in uh some trees.
Okay, do we have a second on Mr. Isaacson's motion?
A second.
Okay, was that you, Justin? How was it, right?
Yeah, that was me.
Okay, thank you. Ally, roll call, please.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Sable indicated that he's abstaining on this one. Mr. Flansbough?
Yes.
Mr. Flansbough? Thank you. Mr. Hertz?
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you, that is five.
Okay.
All right, and just one, uh, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna uh clarify that, so when Ms. McClear, who's also with us, writes the resolution, we'll make sure we have it. So that is uh the 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 curb and sidewalk are required, but curbing only to the extent as necessary deemed necessary by the board engineer after consulting with the applicant. And uh it can be bonded as a condition of perfecting the subdivision. And well.
And shade trees are required on 70.02.
70.02, you have that, uh, Ms. McClear?
I don't see she's on.
Thumbs up, yeah, she's there, she's uh.
Thank you.
She's hiding somewhere. Hi, how are you?
Got it, thanks.
Okay.
Okay.
So, uh, all right, now we'll go on the agenda to the next item, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ally, number two, please.
Thank, thank you to the engineers who presented that one. Engineer and applicant for the last application can leave, um, just not to clutter us up. Thank you. Um, P 2363 AA made by Heshi Riwiki. This is a change of use to convert an existing house to a school at 28 Drake Road.
Okay, Terry, if you're there, can you please go through the reports?
Yes, Chairman, um, beginning on the top of page two, uh, we have a number of submission waivers listed. I'm not gonna go through them all. Um, most of these are are typical with a change of use application. Uh, comment number two, uh, design waivers include uh bus, truck, ball pickup area, shade tree utility use, landscaping, trash, uh, storage, proposed grading and curb and sidewalk, the project frontages, uh, those would be design waivers. Uh, and then under zoning, uh, the projects in the R12 is permitted. Uh, there are no full references identified. Uh, and then again, comment four, design waivers are required from curb and sidewalk along the track frontages of Clarkson Avenue and Atlantic.
Okay. Who's the engineer on this?
Is there an attorney involved in this as well?
No, it's Mr. Delmas, I'm sorry.
No, there's not.
Uh, do you have your app uh say okay with your going forward with this? Oh, there, there he is. I see him nodding his head. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm testimony good before this word be the truth, the hope, it's nothing but the truth.
New Jersey licensed professional engineer and land surveyor, uh, professional planner. The application as indicated is for.
Hold on one moment, hold on one moment. Mr. Herschel, do you recognize Mr. Flans?
Yes.
Yes. And also, I just wanna make the announcement, members of the public who are watching this, uh, the website, there is information about how you can send an email with questions of the applicant, uh, and you've had the opportunity to send them in advance. So uh, when the chairman uh is finished, or when the applicant is finished with their case, we'll, we'll take a moment to allow people to submit email questions. And and then the board will address them at that time, and in that way, uh, the public may participate. Um, so.
Mr. Jackson, that that email for for quick reference for anyone watching is planningboardcomments@lakewoodnj.gov.
Thank you.
And I would note, I I see Mr. who I recognize, Mr. Kaimabadi, who is the applicant, and he's the one who gave thumbs up indicating that Mr. Flannery could proceed. Thank you, Mr. Flannery, for your indulgence. Mr. Flannery, if you would like to continue?
Yes, this is an application for 28 Drake Road to convert an existing residential uh dwelling into a school. Uh, the uh, the property is located at the corner of Clarkson Avenue and Drake Road. Uh, just as a point of reference, uh, this was my neighbor for probably 30 years when it was a residential uh structure. It it's a very nice uh structure. What's proposed is four bedrooms and an office uh with five parking spaces. Uh, I have on the easel next to me, the change of use plan submitted by NextGen, uh, which is also on the township website, and it shows that there is sidewalk along, curb and sidewalk along Clarkson and Drake Road. There is no, uh, there's curb along Atlantic Avenue, no sidewalk. Atlantic Avenue goes nowhere.
And Mr. Flannery, if you notice on your screen, I put up, I believe I put up the uh, the the drawing that you're comparing to?
Yes, you did, and and uh, right, so. Brian, sorry to interrupt. You said how many classrooms? Four classrooms. Plans only show an office and one classroom. Uh, that's the first floor. You have to look at the second floor. It also shows the uh base metris, uh, which uh which we count as a classroom.
So, Brian.
And then you put it on front and back.
Brian, are there any variances on this property?
There, there are no variances.
Okay, and you're not making any changes to the, you're not doing any action? It's just a change of use right now?
Just a change of use, correct.
And you said that there are sidewalks on Drake and Clarkson?
That is correct, and and going on the change of use plan that was submitted.
Like an Atlantic Avenue I see goes nowhere. It hits a property in there.
Ally?
Uh, yes.
What is the lot and block on this? Make sure I have the right one.
It's block 376 lot 1.
Excuse me, Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, just one point of clarification. Uh, as Brian indicated, the change of use plan does show sidewalk along the majority of Drake and Clarkson. However, uh, it's not the entire frontage, so those would still require partial waivers.
Okay.
Is there a reason? I I'm pretty sure they've finished this already, Brian. Is there a reason they didn't put curb and sidewalk? I, I, I don't know why they didn't. You can see the uh along Drake, it goes past the driveway. If the board is familiar with Drake, the adjoining property to the east is a school which fronts on James Street. Uh, and and they have no access to Drake, so that's a developed site. Uh, with no sidewalk, when they did their application, probably 20 years ago, the neighbor that I talked to about before, he came to the meeting and said, please don't put uh sidewalks on Drake Road. We we like the rural uh nature of it. Uh, he was wrong back then. Uh, but there's the sidewalks, this state sidewalks, on the other side of Clarkson, there's sidewalk that go all the way up to uh, the Weinberger property. Uh, at that point, there's no sidewalks until you cross the street. If you cross the street, the Serenity Estates property is there, which has sidewalks that that gets you up to Nyman Road. So this provides for any area uh that that needs the pedestrian access. It provides sidewalk to to connect to the development that occurred along Clarkson Avenue, as well as the the development to the west.
But Brian, I have a question for you. You're you're reading off NextGen's NextGen Land Management Change of Use?
Yes.
I have another one from New Lines that shows sidewalks all the way around it. Is there another sheet?
Uh, no, nobody gave me the sheet from New Lines. I I saw a survey. Are you talking about the New Lines survey map?
It says final as-built survey of property.
Okay, I I I thought the uh, the survey map was consistent with the the uh NextGen plan.
The final as-built.
That's what I thought as well.
Final as-built shows sidewalks going around on the whole Drake, the whole Clarkson, and and the Atlantic Avenue is also part of it. Do you have the plan?
I I don't have that, no.
Okay.
Can I interrupt? Is Clarkson the same street as Atlantic Avenue? I know on your map, it doesn't show up that way, but if you look on Google Maps, uh, Atlantic shows to the west of this property. And on your map that we have from New Lines and NextGen, the Clarkson shows as well as west, so either, I don't know how, I don't know. I can't.
Uh, Clark, Clarkson goes about 100, uh, Clarkson ends at Atlantic. Clarkson only goes between Atlantic and Drake Road. Atlantic then goes to the west about 100 feet, and it goes to the east and provides frontage to uh lots that were done on a subdivision.
Uh, that's called Kyle Court, not Atlantic Court.
Kyle, Atlantic Avenue goes about 100 feet to the west, and then Kyle Court feeds to the south and comes out to James Street.
Okay, so what you call Clarkson, on Google Maps, it's showing as Atlantic Avenue. While you show Atlantic, it's Kyle, so I can clarify what the confusion is. The, my sidewalk is showing on Atlantic Avenue fully. It even shows a little bit on Kyle and on Drake. So I'm not sure which part does not have any sidewalk.
I've pulled it on the screen. On my screen, which I'm sharing, is the latest survey prepared by New Lines. It was revised through April 6, 2020. Um, I assume this is more current information. It does show sidewalk along Clarkson, Atlantic, and even all the way along Drake, whereas the change of use plan showed the sidewalk ending somewhere around here and also ending somewhere around here. The latest survey from New Lines appears to show that a sidewalk waiver is not required at all for this application.
Can you read off Google Map?
Ally, one second. Mr. Mr. Sable, one second. Why do we have two different plans?
Well, this is. This is a survey. Um, the other map is the change of use, where the parking is proposed to fit. Um, this survey also appears to have been updated, so I'm assuming perhaps fieldwork was performed. Um, there was maybe, maybe some additional sidewalk construction in the in the rear recent past. I see Mr. Abadi shaking his head. So you can see this survey, which was used for the change of use, was originally done back in December, but has been updated over the last few months as the site conditions out there have changed, so it does not appear that a sidewalk waiver is required, except for perhaps right here, where this looks like it may actually be part of a right of way that is not approved.
That that's no longer a right of way. That that right of way was, uh, oh, you're correct, it is a right of way. And it's a right of way that, it's a right of way that goes to nowhere, because it's.
Brian, Brian, are you agreeing with the second New Lines map?
Yes, I'm obviously confused. Obviously, the first survey was done before they finished the sidewalk. The updated plan shows that sidewalk is along all the frontages, uh, and and therefore, as Ally indicates, we don't, we don't need a sidewalk waiver. The only area is that a short section of uh a paper street that goes to nowhere, so there would be no reason to put a sidewalk. Brian, that's not a paper street anymore. That was developed. The the first 100 feet of it was developed going to Kyle Court, which I I remember well, because my son's name is Kyle. Uh, and my house was right at the intersection, right where Clarkson uh intersects with Atlantic Avenue is where my house was.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mr. Flannery, please hold on a moment. We have Mr. Isaacson as a board member has given input, and uh, he has stated that his belief that that is paved and developed all the way to the end, and Mr. Flannery obviously has a different recollection, so, and I, you know, we we can't have it like as a debate or an argument, but Mr. Isaacson, you have to set forth your basis why you believe that to be the case, and in response, if you say it's not so, I'd like to know when the last time you were out there.
The current, the current applicant, the current applicant is right next door to my kid's uh yeshiva, as Brian said before. I I live about 35 seconds from the neighborhood, and as Mr. Sable pointed out before, Clarkson is Atlantic Avenue, and Atlantic Avenue goes up till Kyle Court. And that is definitely developed. We're, we're, we're agreeing on that. Atlantic Avenue goes to Kyle Court, and there's sidewalk along Atlantic Avenue up until Kyle Court, as shown on the plan, and then Kyle Court goes out to James Street, so we're in agreement. But what Ally indicated is beyond Kyle Court, there's a uh right of way uh that goes to what was another vacated right of way. Um. That goes behind the property? It, yes, the the yeshiva got the right of way that was behind the property vacated. So there's a roughly 100-foot piece of right of way of Atlantic Avenue in that area where the cursor is going. That's a a paper right of way that has no public uh reason to ever develop it. Um, at at one point, I had requested a vacation of that, uh, but the township was in the situation where they weren't vacating right of ways, so uh it that's the only place where there's not sidewalk on the undeveloped hunt, last 100 feet of Atlantic Avenue, uh, which is a a paper street to nowhere. All right, John, I think we're in agreement.
What's further up Atlantic Avenue? It goes nowhere. It's a private property?
Well, Atlantic Avenue, kinda when it hits Kyle, it goes right and left. And there's a little development over there, and they both lead out onto James Street.
Okay.
So Atlantic Avenue, Atlantic Avenue goes to the east 100 feet to Kyle Court, and then it goes continues to the east another 100 feet to nowhere. Uh, it used to connect to the yeshiva uh, located to the east of it. The yeshiva asked for a vacation of the right of way that was in that vicinity, which was granted. Uh, you know, that that shows up clearly on the uh sheet 82 of the tax map. Atlantic Avenue does go to the west, probably about 500 feet, and it has homes developed along the westerly part of Atlantic Avenue.
Okay.
Excuse me, Chairman?
Excuse me Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Flannery.
Based upon the as-built and based upon testimony, it looks like the applicant only requires waiver of curb and sidewalk on the unfinished portion of Atlantic Avenue as indicated on the as.
Which goes nowhere.
Correct. Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify something. I'm just looking at the chats and I see that Mr. Sable said he recused himself from this application. I don't know if it's this one or a previous one. I just liked enough Mr. Sable's honor often if he's recused himself.
That was the last application, SD 2432. And I know that's.
So he recused from that. I apologize because I didn't know which one that was applicable to.
Ally said it before.
Hello John, how are you?
Hello, Mr. Sable. And then Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Flannery, looking at the map that we had, both the one that Ms. Morse had up a moment ago, it shows a tree line that would roughly coincide with what you say is the of the street. Is that in that condition now?
That portion of the undeveloped right-of-way is wooded.
So it's wooded, so. So what is that, Atlantic? I don't have it in front of me anymore.
Atlantic Avenue.
Atlantic, so Atlantic has a curb and sidewalk as is. The entire right-of-way that owns property, is that fair to say?
It's fair to say, yes.
Do any board members have any questions from?
I have a question, timetable. So Kyle, which is Atlantic Avenue, where he's requesting a waiver from doing sidewalk, that 100 foot, 100 feet. There is, on Google Maps, I'm looking, there is a house actually, I guess towards the south of this property. And I guess these 100 feet, it goes in between the applicant's property and the house? I just want to clarify where that 100 foot is.
Those trees that the cursor is going on now, that's the paper street, the undeveloped paper street.
Okay, so eventually this house is going to come down and we're going to have a big yeshiva over here. I believe we're going to have students walk from James Street.
Hyam, which house is going to come down?
This yeshiva, and they're going to have a big building coming up.
Oh, dear.
That's the yeshiva is there, where the red marker is. That's a brand new house that was just built to the south of it.
James is very far from there.
So the house in question now that we're talking about, they want to change of use. Eventually, they're going to build a big yeshiva on it. They're going to want to have a sidewalk, maybe go entrance from here. And they're going to say that we already gave them a waiver for sidewalk. And if we're going to have students walking from James Street, they might want to have a walkway or another entrance.
It's an open area, Hyam, they could just walk through the woods.
Well, we don't want to do that.
I mean, the application this evening is for a small school and an existing house on a 48,000 square foot lot. If the school wants to build something bigger, they're going to need to come back to the board. And the fact that a waiver was granted at the change of use doesn't constrict the board from requiring whatever else is needed.
Okay, John, can you clarify that? We're going to, will they have to come back again for a waiver for sidewalk for that extra property?
Ally, could you point to the extra property that they're?
Yes, so the question is this little house that they're turning into a yeshiva. If they're going to expand upon that in the future or knock it down and build a big fancy school, because the board had previously granted a waiver here, would that mean they're entitled to a waiver at that future application?
See, now I'm confused because I thought the application that we're on for now does not show a yeshiva there. And that's this entire property that goes past.
That's a change of use they're going for right now.
It's a house they are changing to a yeshiva. Mr. Sable is saying at some point in the future, the yeshiva is going to grow and they're going to expand upon that.
That would be a question for Terry. We know there's criteria that there's an exemption if it's less than like 1,000 square feet or something like that. They can do it with that board action or you get site plan exemption. Mr. Vogel, what level of development would trigger them coming back to the board if they wanted to do any kind of additions, expansions, or upgrades? I think Ally can probably answer that better than I can because she usually does the request. But my understanding is the primary trigger is 1,500 square feet of the building.
Mr. Jackson, the question Mr. Sable asked was even if they come back to the board, because we're granting a waiver today, does that automatically give them a waiver when they come back to the board at a future day?
No. We would make it clear that if they had to come back to the board, that they would have to, their case at that point for any.
I will try to mute that person, I have to find them.
The difference is, the reason why I asked how big the exemption, to put that as a condition and then have a surprise when they do a 1,500 square foot addition and not have to put the sidewalks in. Because, you know, that's not a board hearing that would trigger that. We could put any addition or any expansion would require board approval. But I don't know if it would hold up or be noticed if they're allowed to get an exemption for up to 1,500 square feet.
I think Mr. Sable's concern was a big yeshiva was going to go. They brought 1,500 square foot addition, isn't an addition. In addition, it's still a sidewalk in the woods going to nowhere, even with 1,500.
I just wanted to make sure Mr. Sable understands what the limitations were when I say yes. If they came back to the board, the board would be able to make them put sidewalks in at that time. I just wanted to make sure for 1,500 square feet, they don't have to come back to the board.
Brian, are there any wetlands on this property? I know there's wetlands in the area.
There are no wetlands on the property.
There's in the neighboring property? I notice school that.
Across the street, I think, Mr. Herzl.
Across the street, the other side of Drake Road is the Crystal Lake Reserve with lots of wetlands.
I'm sorry, I'm just a little confused again. Didn't you say that this property was granted to vacate?
I thought this part of it was vacated. The only thing that was vacated was they're using the street along here. You can see the 25-foot log. So this property is 25 feet wider, the street between this residence and the school and between my 400 property and the school that was vacated. So that makes it now where this 100-foot piece of Atlantic Avenue goes to nowhere.
Okay.
Want to get back to the application? Terry's report indicates there's no drop-off or pickup area. The parents in this school coordinate the driving of students. And there's parents that have vans that take the students and they get reimbursed from the other parents. It's a cooperative kind of thing. So they'll have three vans that would drive the, all the students there and they alternate the times they come. So there's no reason for a bus drop-off.
What age are these kids? Brian, what age are the students?
Oh, it's ninth and 10th grade boys. And we're anticipating 33 of them next year.
And what's the maximum you're going to have in this building?
33.
33 students, that's it?
Maybe Mr. Abadi would have if there's an upside number, but 33 is what I was told.
Okay.
Eight kids per classroom?
I am, you're muted, Hyam, if you're saying something.
So how do you know I'm trying to say hello?
I'm waiting for Vision to speak.
I can hear him.
Okay, so his plan is for next year, 33 students? He doesn't know what he's going to do the year after? One second, Hyam, you have to be affirmed, no? Mr. Jackson, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I thought you meant Hyam Sable.
Yeah, that's what I. Yeah, our Hyams mixed up. Mr. Abadi, raise your right hand, do you swear a firm testimony to give before the board, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I have sworn.
And your relationship to this application?
I'm helping the school out.
Right.
Mr. Abadi, is Esther the applicant? We have an Esther on.
Is on the phone in my ear right now.
Okay, okay.
So the 33 students is the plan for next year. They're at this point in time, not sure what they're going to do afterwards. They know that they'd have to add to the building later. He does have in his dream that he's going to buy one of the neighboring properties or make a deal with someone to get some more land because he wants to put up a bigger building. Otherwise, he's just going to move. At this point in time, for next year, he just needs to do this, the 33 students. Good?
There's really no one to buy from except for Terrace Emmett.
That's not Terrace Emmett, that's Raphaels Strick.
Oh, I'm saying, there's nobody to buy from except for Terrace Emmett, just next door.
Right, yes, correct.
I think it's very hard to believe that we're only going to have eight students per classroom. I don't think you should put it public because you're going to get a lot of applications.
Mr. Sable, we need two classes right now. There's only a ninth and 10th grade.
This coming year is a ninth and 10th. This year is only ninth. Next year is ninth and 10th, and that's it.
After two years, you're not using this building anymore?
He's not sure whether he's going to make, use the building and add to it or he's going to move. Does not know what he's going to do in the future.
So Mr. Abadi, your testimony is basically within two years, you can be back by the board notifying, or you're expanding, or you're moving, you're doing something. But you will not, not coming back to the board after two years.
Did I hear that?
Basically, you said, you heard the question?
Yes, and he said yes.
Okay, okay.
Getting back to Terry's report then, it indicates that no bulk variances are required. We had the comment about providing curbs and sidewalks. We've indicated that we do need a partial waiver for the curb and sidewalk along the paper street portion of it, the wooded piece of Atlantic Avenue that goes nowhere, and we're requesting that waiver. Terry has testimony on the number of students. We went over that, it's 33. The parents drive, and they would come.
One second, Brian, please mute, please mute if you're not talking, please.
A lot of people are muted. I think it might just be that Brian's room is echoing, maybe. It seems to be coming from him, unfortunately.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Then there was the comment on testimony with regard to the refuse storage. And it would be rollout containers that would be picked up by DPW. And then there's question with respect to the landscaping. And it's a lot that has a lot of landscaping. It's very nicely landscaped. We're not changing anything. We don't think any landscaping is needed. So we're requesting a waiver from that, although in reality, there's landscaping there. So we're not getting away with anything. And that's my testimony.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, can you just tell me a little bit more about this cooperative van agreement that the parents have?
Yes, they'll, three of the parents have vans and they pick up the other kids and bring them to school. So there's 33 kids, it would be 11 in each van.
And that's what they do now?
Hello.
Okay, Brian, could you show us, could you show us where the vans will drop off the kids? Those three vans.
Well, there's five parking spaces, the vans don't all come at the same time. The vans are staggered, so in one of the five parking spaces.
When you say the vans don't come at the same time, the morning prayers, the morning prayers, I mean, what do they do? What time do they get there?
Well, they stagger by five or 10 minutes each. So it only takes a few minutes for all the kids to get out of the one van and the next van comes.
Got it.
Maybe. Hello.
Dave, yeah.
Hello.
Yeah, Dave?
Yes, they questioned on this. How do you, he say it's five minutes. I just came down Core Street, which they tell me is a 10-minute ride, and it took me a half hour. I don't think it even depends on five minutes.
For 11 kids to get out of a van, the door opens up and the kids get out?
You know kids, you know the packages they carry? And if the next bus is three minutes early and the next one's three minutes late, you've got two buses. I don't think you can depend on five minutes. And these are relatively busy, relatively busy streets.
Well, Drake Road is busy, Clarkson Avenue is not.
Yeah, that's Clarkson Avenue today. I think we have to do this anticipating what's going to happen tomorrow.
Dave, Mr. Abadi said that this is maximum for only two years. We're not anticipating any major growth next two years.
Yeah, but then what?
If there's any growth, they have to come back to the board.
Yeah, but, yeah, but what's done is done. And it's going to be difficult to redo it again. You know, we may get a request for a variance and end up with all we have. I think we have to be careful on this.
Okay. Brian?
Yes.
Is there room, you know, if the vans pull in, the whole asphalt driveway, there's enough room for a van to turn around and back out and turn and get around?
Mr. Herzl, I know the property. There's enough room for three vans to back and turn around and back out.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Isaacson, can I ask you a question? Let's talk about worst-case scenario, about 18 kids in a classroom, 18 times four, what is it, 68 divided in seven passengers? That's almost 10 cars. Do you think we have a place for 10 vans?
So again, it's a high school. They're coming probably between 7:30 and 8 o'clock in the morning. That time of day, there's really no traffic on Drake Road. There's probably around seven to 10 parking spots at the facility itself. If you have the four rabbis that'll be there in the morning, there's probably still enough room to do a mini stagger of probably around eight, eight minivans, yeah, eight, 15 passenger vans. But again, as Mr. Herzl said before from Mr. Abadi, this is a two-year plan. So this is next year and the year after that, which will be ninth, 10th, and 11th grade. Just going on their numbers right now, you have roughly 16 people per class. You'll have 54 in year, at the end of year two, at which point they'll have to come back.
I think I agree with everything except that we can't rely that it's only two years. We're not giving them a TCO for two years and they have to come back front of the board. The building is going to be in place and whatever happens there, happens there.
I believe from Mr. Herzl's question, that's exactly what we want to do.
Okay, can you clarify?
Mr. Abadi has to clarify, he wanted to say something.
I just wanted to mention that the reason why there's vans here is not, any other reason except logistic. The boys come from different parts of town. It doesn't make sense for a bus to drive around Lakewood for an hour and a half to finally get 50 kids to this school. So the best thing is for parents to get together in different areas and they get picked up. But that's the reason for the vans and that's why he did it that way to start with.
My question is if five parking spaces is enough? If you do have more than, if you have two, three vans coming at the same time, plus the teachers, you only have five parking spaces, is that enough to have the vans pull in? Let's assume the vans come at the same time. We need the parking space for the vans to pull in, plus the parking spaces for the staff. Is five enough or not? That's the question, I think. That's more parking space.
And we have the space to add parking. We can make it the circle of driveway, we can let cars go in one way, the other way. We have the space, it's a huge property.
I have a question. When the buses take the children, they are insured. When private people take them in a van and they're picking up other children, who's responsible?
The private insurance.
That's a tricky one to answer, you know. Any involvement in it, liable. Can, I have a question. We're talking about these vans, and that sounds kind of organized to me. The idea that there's two or three parents who provide these vans and they go all around the town and they pick up these 55 kids and they all do it on the same day. and they pick up these fifty-five kids, and they all do it on the same day every day. Is, are these, like, is, it sounds to me like there's actual fleet of vans that's owned by somebody who's not the parents. Are these all the same type of van? Uh, do, do, do they belong to people? Is it a private car? Like, if I take, uh, you know, my Suburban and take people up as a favor? Or is this a van that has the name of the school on the side of it, and someone owns it, who's not a parent?
No, he's a, he's a private van, private homeowner. It's a homeowner.
With our, our children being on a private van, is, is it proper?
Make Mr. Garfield that.
They get, they get into a problem, and it's a private van. How do we know when they inspect it? The brakes are no good. You know, I'm just, and I think we have to be careful, because they're going to school. We're responsible, no matter what, bottom line. Uh, I don't think we should depend on private, uh, parents. Unless it's someone taking their child, one, one or two children. But to pick up children all over, I, I just think we're looking at a problem.
Yeah, Dave, I don't think you can force a parent to say that you want the kids only with a bus. If the parent is, is, is okay with sending a child with a, with a van.
Yeah, that's their own child, right?
I, I don't know, I don't know there's any requirement to force them with a bus.
No.
Chair, um.
There's no environment, there's no law until they make one.
Okay. Mr. Flansmore?
No, through the chair, I was gonna say, if they have, if they have three, if that's what they currently, uh, if that's what they currently utilize, this, uh, van-sharing program that the parents all chip in on, uh, I mean, the vans are in and out. Um, you know, there's, there's only, there's only a few vans, that's what we're talking about, they're in and out. And, uh, I don't know that we need any more than what's being provided.
The, the only thing, uh, is they have four classrooms, so they need four parking spaces for the staff. You leave one extra parking space for the vans, but that's what I'm saying, they'll be staggered. Uh, you know, technically, if we had eight parking spaces, you have two, three more, then you have enough for all the vans to come at the same time, plus the staff. If there's room for it, then there's no, there's no problem with any.
We're, we're calling it four classrooms, the, the one is the base madrisht. See, there's actually only three classrooms, of, of which only, uh, two would be occupied next year. And, and as Mr. Isaacson indicated, we show the parking lot, we show it striped. There's a lot more room for vehicles than is shown there. Uh, and, and it's, uh, it's my professional testimony that it, it's sufficient to accommodate the, uh, proposed trips and the, and the staff that's proposed for the site.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, how? How big is the bismadrisht, Brian?
Um. If somebody.
I have the question. Twenty-six by twenty-six. Six hundred and seventy-six, does that require a parking spot?
We're indicating it as a classroom, which is the typical way we, we do it, uh, and definitely. That's how we come up with the, the required of five.
Terry, if I can bother Terry, Terry?
Yes, Brian's interpretation is correct.
Okay, but my, my interpretation that this is a bismadrisht of six hundred and seventy-five square feet, does that require a parking spot?
No, because the way it says written, it counts as one classroom.
Okay.
So, Mr. Sable, right, Mr. Sable, the way they come up with five, there's one office, one bismadrisht, and three classrooms, which gives them five. So basically, they have the five parking spaces for the staff. They don't have for the vans to pull in. That's, that, that's what it boils down to.
Absolutely agree. I'm just concerned for the worst-case scenario, if we have fifty kids over there, and then we have a lot more vans, which is gonna be very challenging to turn around. Now, we have the land, we have the ground, we don't have to pavement, maybe gravel, stone, or something, we can give them a little better, safer place for drop-off and pickup.
Okay, so Brian, are you there?
Yes.
Is there any room besides the five parking spaces to make an extra one or two parking spaces for a van to pull in, uh, without the staff? Do they have to stay there or to turn around?
But, as, as indicated on the plan, we have the room. The, the question is, is it worth, uh, uh, knocking down the existing vegetation to provide more room when the applicant and I feel that what's there is sufficient?
But I am concerned, and I think more board members, for the worst-case scenario, unless you guys are willing to commit to a TCO of two years, I don't know if we can do that. But if any, if we have more than thirty-three students and more than thirty-five students, where we suspect more, more vehicular traffic, we would like to have a better circulation plan.
I think he's speaking with the applicant.
Mr. Who?
I'm Abadi.
Oh.
And if you look on Google Maps, there's enough place to make a driveway without cutting down a single tree. It's a common driveway on the right side.
Yeah, I see. I see. What, what Mr. Rowiki is saying to me on the phone is that he does not want to do it now. As the need requires, he may add later, but he does not want to do it now, if he could avoid it. Also, he's saying that in the morning, when the boys come on the van, they're coming for shachrus, that's the morning prayer. And there's only one rabbi there initially to welcome them, and then the other rabbis come later.
I, I believe that's true, and it makes sense. The only question is down the road, in a year or two from now, when the building, the Shiva will expand, and, you know, it probably will expand, we have to do something to, to make sure that it's not a disaster over there. How can we, how can we know that we're voting on something that we're not creating a disaster? Can we do limit to a two-year TCO, and then you have to come back in front of the board? Can you commit something else? How, how can we feel comfortable?
I see.
Yes? Hello?
I see you're on the microphone over there. He wants to know from you if you're willing to put in additional driveway now.
It could be gravel, we don't have to do a pavement even.
Okay, I see, I see, forget it, no.
Okay.
I'll tell you what, we, we can have Terry agree to a specific location where he would want the gravel to be right over that driveway, and let Terry decide what's needed. We're comfortable with that.
Okay. Is there enough area for the vans to turn around or pull up? If, if all the teachers are there, all the staff members are there?
So it'll end up being a, a, they pull in, they K-turn out, and that's the simple. Probably needs another twenty-five, twenty-four feet probably to back up, that's all.
Okay. Can, Terry, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I, I'd recommend Brian draw up a concept plan, I, I'd work with our office.
Brian, are you ready?
Looking for it, and it, as indicated, there is room to do it. The applicant has indicated a, uh, hey, so, uh, we certainly provide that plan as a condition of approval.
Okay, thank you.
Can we request to review it before the resolution? Is that an option?
Yes.
Okay. And I think John is gonna answer the next question. Can we limit this for a certain amount of years? Let's say three years or four years of, of a TCO? Or once we, we issue this change of use, it's always in place?
Hold on, I thought I might have, um, and, and you have to get the thing to come back up on the screen. The TCO is tricky because, um, you know, it's, it's not a condition that's specific to the approval, so I don't know how enforceable it is. But I, 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 you know, I, I don't know why you couldn't make a condition that they put a TCO, condition on them doing something at the end of the TCO. Um, I don't know how that's ever going to be followed up on and enforced, though.
Guys, I, I, I think that's very messy. I, I, you know, let them, let them do the improvement now, and it's very messy to, to do some condition on a TCO for a certain amount of years. That's just.
Yeah, I think it's unworkable, too.
Let's get them to do it. Let them do it now, and that's it.
Yeah, one at a time, please.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, Mr. Flansmore, you finished?
I'm finished, Chairman.
I, I think Dave is trying to say something.
Dave wanted to say something, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I live in the development I live. We have an emergency road that funds in for, uh, ambulance, whatever it is. It's a blocked road that they do plant grass in, it's like a cinder block on its side. They put a chain up for emergency, and, uh, this is, it is a temporary, uh, road for emergencies, but something of this type, in case you need it in the future, it's there. And it's not, remember, it's, you don't need a substructure. It's a, it can be traveled on if you need it. Uh, the, the picture it like, uh, it's in the block on its side. It has holes, we planted grass in there. The mowers can just go over it, but in case we need it, or they want to put a road in, it's there. The, the curb is down. You don't have to really rebuild it. You look at blocks, and they have a curb, they have a sidewalk, they have a roadway. You know, they're sort of anticipating what is needed, and you got the space put there.
Yeah, Mr. Garfield, they, they don't know, they don't know what they're doing within the next two years. They definitely have to come back to the board if they want to do this properly.
If they, and it does meet the criterion of the space they need, if they put another road in.
Okay. Okay. Any, any, any other board members have any questions?
Yeah, Kaim Sable, the question regarding the septic or sewer?
Okay. It's a septic. So well on it.
I got you, Brian, you're unmuted.
Okay, the, uh, the house was originally built on, uh, septic, so it's, it's currently on a septic system, which is functioning. Uh, public water has been installed in Drake Road. If there's any problem with the septic, you can.
I'm Abadi.
Hooked up the sewer.
Okay.
They hooked it up to sewer already.
Model talk.
Okay. Any other questions for any board members?
While we're working on that parking, uh, parking lot extension, we would like to see a interior design of, if there's any sidewalk on the property inside, from the street till the road, till the, uh, building. If you can show some of that as well, that'd be great.
Yes, we, we would do that on the same plan, uh, which we would show the board prior to adopting the resolution.
Thank you very much.
Any other board members have any questions?
One recommendation, Chairman, if I could.
There we go.
Yes, the, the recommendation on interior sidewalk is a good one. You may want to allow the applicant, if it's on-site sidewalk, the flexibility, uh, to go with asphalt.
Okay, I'm okay with it, especially if it's only temporary.
I agree with that a lot, Kaim Sable.
Okay. Um, I think we'll open it up to the public. Ally, did you, did anybody send any emails?
Yes, we did receive an email, am I muted? Hold on.
No, you're not, I hear you.
No, I'm not muted, thank you. We did receive an email, um, from Heim Stein on Drake Road. Um, I didn't know if Mr. Jackson's office wanted to filter these, or if I should just read it as received.
Ally, we received an earlier email as well.
Hold on, I, I, I'm sorry, I, I was muted. Um, the, I took, I took a look at this email, and I'm having, I think it's appropriate to read this. They provided their name, and, uh, their address, um, and, and Kaim Stein had to comment. And Ally, I could read it if you want me to.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so this would be addressed to the applicant and also to the board, because I think it's a, uh, it says, "We, hi, we, the current neighbors of Drake Road, do not want a sidewalk along the entire frontage of the change-of-use application. Uh, please do not grant any sidewalk." Signed by Kaim Stein, uh, Kaim Stein.
I think you misspoke. The email says, "We do want a sidewalk," not, "we do not."
Well, that certainly changes things, so I'm glad you, you were following along with me. Do you want, Ally, just to make sure?
Um, I have, um, just keep in mind, anyone speaking cannot speak for others, so really, he's only speaking for himself, though he says, "We, the current neighbors of Drake Road, do want a sidewalk along the entire frontage of the change-of-use application. Please do not grant any sidewalk waivers." This was received for the record on six forty-six. So I'm not sure at what point during our discussion of the vacate, of the, um, unimproved part of Atlantic, how much the applicant had already heard about that. But, um, the board did clarify that all along Drake and all along Clarkson, there is sidewalk, and there is sidewalk along the improved portion of Atlantic. So the only waiver we are considering is for that unimproved portion of Atlantic. It's about a hundred feet long, and it does not go anywhere.
It, it's interesting, he's saying that he wants the sidewalks.
Yeah.
It sounds like it's not in yet.
It's a bit ambiguous, I, I, I don't, apparently, it seems like there is some portion of the frontage on Drake Street that is missing some sidewalk, so.
I mean, if, if the board. If you're not granting the waiver, then if it's not in and the survey is wrong, then you'll have to put it in.
Okay, good. Then I think we all agree on that. I think the only waiver we're, we're talking about was on, uh, Atlantic Avenue, a small portion.
And the objectors' comment related directly to Drake, which we're indicating we want, we're not asking for any relief for sidewalk along Drake. Though there is sidewalk along the entire frontage per the, uh, survey map, and if the survey map is wrong, the applicant will put sidewalk in to match the survey map.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, on, on the survey map, it doesn't show entire sidewalk, it only starts, uh, about fifteen feet. I'm looking at the next edge, the next, uh, next gen, sorry.
Another map from Eli's that we saw.
Yeah, yeah, okay, disregard, disregard.
Okay, Ally, do we have any other emails?
Um, hold on just a minute, I'm sorry, I'm finding something in my digital file.
Okay.
That's labeled as public comment, I just need a minute to open it.
Okay, thank you, Terry.
Um, yes, this email came through, John, I'm not sure if you've seen it, from April thirtieth. It is from Ariya and Giti Zimba. They are the owners of Block Three Seventy-Five, Lot One Point Oh One, which is One Kyle Court, near next door. Um, I can read this into the record if the board would like.
Um, if you.
Ally.
One minute, I could put it up on the screen.
Okay.
And we did receive that, John and I received it, and we looked at it.
I think it's a thorough and, um, appropriate comment.
We agree with that assessment.
All right, can everybody, now, I don't know, we might as well read it. It says, "We're the owners of, uh, Three Seventy-Five, Lot One Oh One, One Kyle Court. Our home is next door to the proposed Shiva. While we are not acting to the application, we request that in order to protect the privacy of our family, the applicant may be required to plant a row of green arborvitae on the side of the property that is adjacent to our property. There exists a paper road between the properties, however, it's less than a forty-foot buffer. We'd like the board to understand, we purchased this area and built ourselves a home because of the rural character, being next-door neighbors with the schools completely unanticipated. While a regular school brings noise and lack of privacy, how much more so a high school with teenage boys are on the ground all day while it's the evening? A summer must come upon us, and everyone spends time outdoors. We are apprehensive how enjoyable it can be for us and our young children with teenage boys practically in our yard. And indeed, for, for, uh, the past few months, the boys have milled about in the backyard throughout the day, as the school has no indoor recreation or gym, and downtime is largely spent outside. Presence of the Shiva in this neighborhood will completely change the character of our neighborhood. And while we are not finding the proposal, we think it only fair that the proposal be approved contingent upon their providing privacy trees to shield the property from our home." Thank you. It, uh, consideration, Raya and Giddy Zimbaya. I, I apologize if I said the name wrong. So I, I read it quickly, was everyone, I presume everybody was able to read along, um, to get the exact comments.
Brian, are you there? We will do it.
All right. Abadi, uh.
Who just spoke?
Has agreed to, uh.
Yes.
That, that they would provide that. Is that acceptable to the board? I mean, you know, Mr. Chairman, I don't see why it would not be, but.
Yes, to me, it's acceptable.
John, what's the address of that, of that, uh, commenter?
One Kyle.
They, they give the lot in Block Three Seventy-Five, Lot One Point Oh One, One Kyle.
Um, they do specify. Um, they do specify, they, they're asking for grown arborvitae. I'm gonna assume that means six to eight feet tall. Terry, would you consider that grown?
That's typically what's installed new, Ally.
And, and I guess, Terry, you'll work out with the applicant how far apart they'll be spaced?
Yes, uh, I'll work with Brian, he's gonna be doing the concept plan on the access anywhere.
Okay.
That should be incorporated as well.
Okay.
I believe there's a chain-linked fence, fence over there. That's what the map definitely did survey says.
Does it, does it meet the criterion in the setback and in the rear? See, there room for a play area behind the school.
There, there is area in the back for play area behind the school with respect to, does it meet the ordinance? The ordinance says if you leave twenty feet on the curb, which they are, you don't have to do anything, but the applicant to be a good neighbor has agreed to the arborvitae in addition to that.
Then if you put arborvitae, and I have some in my backyard, they have to be twelve foot wide now that they've grown in twenty years. That would give you eight foot. As per your twenty foot.
I think that you have twelve foot wide arborvitae. Okay.
There are, I'll call them, there are arborvitae, they don't go wide, but they go tall.
We will have the landscape parking.
If I may interject, it's common for Mr. Vogts' firm, they, they have landscaping experience, their standards, uh, for the caliper of the trees, the height, where they'll be planted on sta, on, uh, on center, so, uh, I'm, I can handle that.
No, I'm not worried about the trees, I'm, I'm sure they'll be lovely and so on. I'm worried about the room for a, right now, thirty-three children to play. I don't know what the rule is per child, but I'm concerned with, uh, ten years down, I'll guarantee probably ten of us won't be there. And, you know, we have to look to, I think we have to look toward the future, at least leaving a, a maraspace for children to have, uh, green, a green area. I don't want them to think, uh, the green area is black asphalt.
Mr. Flannery, it looks like there's a large, um, side yard, which is kind of taken up by a shed and a faux rock formation thing. I'm not sure if the, the boys are able to do rock climbing there, but maybe there's some space there for older boys to have some sort of semi-active recreation somewhere on the side.
There, there is plenty of space, it's a one-point wide extra site, so there's plenty of room. A faux rock formation actually has a faux cage that the boys can go inside and relax. Uh, it, it's. That's the marketing that will propose a species of arborvitae that is both more ornamental than spreading, and Mr. Vogts' office will review it, so I'm sure that's not gonna detract from the area for the boys, uh, to have room on site to be outside.
Okay. Ally, do we have any other?
Those are the only two comments that I received, that we received.
Okay, thank you, Ally, and I'm closing it to the public right now. Okay, any questions from any board members?
I would like to clarify the couple items that we discussed that we would put into a motion.
Okay.
We had the, uh, only the sidewalk to the extra hundred feet in between the subject property and One Kyle, that's the only waiver for sidewalk and curb, and obviously adding these trees that the neighbor requested.
And there's inside sidewalks.
And then we had inside sidewalk and a, and a proper, uh, additional parking through asphalt, does not have to be concrete. We also wanted to make sure that it's sewer, not septic. Uh, I think that's all. Oh, and, and all the sidewalk around it should be installed, not, not pending or approved or so on.
Okay. Would, uh, I would ask, I would ask for a motion on this application?
I would make a motion on, on, based on this comment.
Okay, Mr. Sabal makes a motion, we have a second on that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, there was Mr. Meyer.
I couldn't see who it was, I'm sorry. Oh, Mr. Meyer? Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield.
No.
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Sabal.
Yes.
Mr. Flandspom.
Yes.
Mr. Hertzel.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson. Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
If I can add, my, my vote should be voided if we don't get, uh, if we don't get to see the circulation plan or the sidewalk before the resolution. Enough time to review it.
So we don't vote on, we don't vote on it?
But.
Mr. Stern, who voted, who are your child? Okay, Ally, on to the next, the last, last application. Definitely.
Our last application is SD 2424, made by Geffen Construction. This is a major subdivision on Oak Street. It is next door to the Tashbar School, I believe. Um, they are looking to create nineteen duplex units and one synagogue.
Hey, and, uh. Terry, would you like to go through the report, please?
Yes, Chairman. Just give me a minute here. Looking at our letter dated March 4th. I'm beginning, uh, midway on page four, under Roman number one, submission waivers. Uh, you're listed, including sheet size, traffic study, topo within two hundred feet, contours, man-made features within two hundred feet, and the IS. Um, we have no issue with the sheet size. Uh, we do have a sub, the traffic waiver submission. So the, I don't think we have to have that anymore. Uh, we have no issues with the waivers. As information between two hundred feet of the property is indicated, uh, and we can support the waiver from the IS, uh, based on having no environmental constraints. Also, with a permit granted, uh, the subdivision will have to comply with the township tree ordinance.
Wait, Terry, I didn't, I didn't get you, they're asking for waiver on traffic study?
It looks like they had originally requested one. Um, they had given a traffic statement. I, I would accept that for hearing purposes. Obviously, if the board was additional information, uh, we, we, we'll, we'll find out during the hearing. I think what they, is adequate for hearing purposes.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to grant the waivers to go along with engineers' recommendations?
So move, it's just it.
Okay, move, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Meyer, second. Ally, I'm gonna ask you to go to make a roll call.
Okay. Mr. Garfield, do you support the waiver recommendations?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Sabal?
Yeah.
Mr. Flandspom, you still there?
Yes, I said yes.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Mr. Hertzel?
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Ally, just because it's virtual, I'd wanna keep, keep a perfect record as much as possible.
Yep, thank you.
We'll go through.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, on page five of, of, of review under zoning, uh, as indicated, uh, the projects in our 10A, uh, the two-family housing and duplexes allowed, uh, no var, no bulk variances have been requested. Um, we had issues originally about the architectural, but it's our understanding and the applicant are gonna confirm, uh, that there's no variances that are gonna be requested. Uh, comment number three, uh, again, um, we believe that the applicant is gonna confirm of that they're not seeking parking relief as well. Uh, they do require relief with respect to perimeter buffer, um, with the rabbi's residence and, and the basement shul is indicated. Uh, I believe that is all of the zoning relief required. Um. We've got to start, come on, this chair.
Where is this property? I don't even have an, I don't have a map.
Time, it's next door to Tashbar.
It's directly next to Tashbar.
What address do I put in?
It doesn't have an address, it's not developed.
Okay.
Type in, type in, and look at the property next door.
Usually we got a map of the, of the, you know, the block and lot, we didn't get that.
Put an eighty-two oh three. Put eighty-two oh, that's Tashbar.
Mr. Chairman, this is Adam Pfeffer. If I can, just, just a quick opening remark, and then I can have Brian mark the exhibits, and it might help move along the, uh, the application. Uh, as Terry indicated, uh, this is an application for, uh, nineteen duplexes, thirty-eight units, plus one lot for a rabbi's residence. Uh, we are seeking no bulk variances on this application. Um, Brian, this, we just have somewhat of a story to press, and, uh, Brian can address some of the, that history, um, once he is sworn in. Brian, I would ask after you get sworn in, if you can, just maybe mark the exhibit we're gonna be used, um, for ease of use. Okay? And John, if you can swear in, or Gillian swear in, uh, Mr. Flannery?
Sure, um, just so everyone is aware, John just lost his connection momentarily, so he's logging back in, so I'll swear you in, Mr. Flannery. Great. Uh, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. I'm Flannery Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and land surveyor. Um, so.
All right.
I have.
John, we just swore, we just, uh, swore in Mr. Flannery.
I'm, uh, I'm sorry.
John, the board took a motion, they, they made Gillian the net, the new attorney for the board?
That, that means that they upgraded, they upgraded. I'm sorry, you had, you had said whether it was a map, I see Mr. Flannery, uh, has put that up. Um, let me just also.
I, I was gonna mark the exhibits, which is what Adam indicated.
Why didn't we get it?
These exhibits were submitted, uh, to the board digitally. Um, uh, A1 is, uh, the, uh, final plan, uh, and all is done on, 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 uh, A1.
Mr. Flannery, can, can you hold on for one moment? You see what I just put up on the screen?
Your screen is blank. Screen is blank.
No, I see you, I see you.
I see it also, John.
Okay, is, is, is that the correct, uh, plan?
Yes, that's the correct project, but I have these specific exhibits that Brian Flannery's referencing. I apologize, I thought they were delivered to the board, but I may only have the digital footage.
Ally, we were only given the, uh, the duplexes and the rabbi's residence with the synagogue and the basement.
You, you can get a full set of plans?
No, we didn't get any circulation and sidewalks and driveways, none of these.
I, I, I did, I did get.
Unless it, unless it's separate.
Yeah, this, Walter Joseph Hapkin, is that it, Ally?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess he only likes Mr. Hertzel.
Okay.
No, I can see Jakey has a full set.
Okay, I apologize, there's a big, there's a big, another big file, they're taped in a FedEx box.
All right, now I'm gonna pull up, I will pull up, uh, I'll show my screen so I can show you the exhibits that Brian is referencing.
We have it. All right.
So Brian, what do you think? Okay. Ally, Ally's gonna put it on the screen, but this is the final plan, and I just highlighted on the final plan, so the board, see what the difference is, phase one and phase one. So phase one is the, uh, twelve units that are located along Wadsworth Avenue, uh, and the rabbi's residence, uh, and shul, and phase two would be the remaining twenty-six, which would be the extension of, uh, Edco Avenue at Orgile.
Okay, the, the, Brian, before we go further, how many total units are you putting up on this?
Thirty-eight.
That's thirty-eight duplexes or thirty-eight singles?
Uh, it, it's nineteen duplexes for thirty-eight dwelling units.
Okay, and, and the rabbi's residence is on phase one or phase two?
It would be in phase one.
Okay, on what Ally's showing up, that's showing the phase two.
So phase two, you can see it's, is in blue, uh, and it's hard to see on the plan where it says that the, uh, the rabbi's residence and shul is phase one, but it's clearly on the plans indicated to be in phase one.
Oh, I, I, I see, yeah, phase one, phase one on the bottom, and then phase two in the middle. Oh, I see. You're doing it in two different places, okay. It's a total of thirty-eight units, and that's what you said, nineteen duplexes.
Correct.
Nineteen duplexes plus a rabbi's house and shul, a total of twenty, twenty units, right? Twenty property gone. Thirty-eight properties plus the shul. Is that correct?
Including a rabbi's residence, it would be thirty-nine dwelling units and the, the shul.
Okay.
That's, that's exhibit A1. Exhibit A2, a, uh, tax map, uh, that shows where the property is, and, uh, hopefully, uh, Heim Sabal has, has located on Google Earth.
I did, thank you.
It's, it's right behind Tashbar, on Oak Street, that, that was where the township sold property to schools. Uh, Heshi Shores, this school is on, it, it's to the west of it, on, uh, Block 1009. The Oak Street School is on Oak Street, and then you go further down the street where you have Shai and, and all the other schools. Uh, this property is the subject of a litigation settlement. Uh, there was, uh, Nassau Avenue, uh, is vacated. Uh, the township owned the property at the time. There was ownership issues between, uh, the selling of that, litigation between the joint owners, the township, Tashbar, uh, and the settlement of that litigation application that's before you're here this evening, which consists of three lots, Lot 1 in Block 1017, Lot 1 and 2 in Block 1024.
Mr. Flannery, I think those lots have since been combined and they are actually a new single lot.
Okay.
That's, as referenced on our certifying list, which we have prepared for Mr. Pfeffer.
Okay, yes, I, I see the final flat causes, lots 1 in 1.03 and Block 1024, so I, I guess that would be, uh, part of the, uh, the settlement agreement had, had done that. But it's in the same location, it's at the end of Edco Avenue. Uh, all of the properties, uh, the, the south of this, and also Block 1024 were part of the Oak Street Core application, which was a tougher approval done by the township, provided for, uh, tree saving areas, stormwater management and recreation areas. Uh, and then the, uh, uh, upper part of it, uh, was part of a plan that had campus housing that was done by Tashbar prior to the litigation, which, uh, changed it to what we're asking for this evening. And then, uh, Exhibit A3 is just a colored, uh, rendering on an area, uh, prepared by WJ Engineering, and it, again, it shows the, uh, nineteen duplex units, the rabbi's residence with the shul, uh, you can see Tashbar on here, and you can see some of the duplex or the Oak Street Core developments around the property. This is a. This is a logical extension of, of the properties in the R10A and, um, we're not asking for any bulk variances referenced.
Chairman, can we have Brian to pick up the handset, not on speaker? I, I don't know, it'd probably be difficult then. If you can pick up your headset.
And you're not so clear.
Um, I, I don't have a headset, so.
You speaking on a, on a phone or a webcam?
Uh, on a webcam.
He could, um, he could mute. He could change his audio settings to phone. You can call in by phone, Brian, and still keep your video going.
All right.
All right, so at the very bottom of your screen, there's a bunch of dots. One of them is a circle with three dots in it. All right, so click on that and then choose audio connection. And then it would say, call me, and you can put your phone number in there. And you'll be connected the way, um, Chat Vermont was from the beginning of the meeting. You'll still see your video, but your audio will be through the phone. Um, where's John? Can we mute John? He's typing. Thank you. Never mind. I got it. Did you find that, Brian?
I found it. I started putting my.
I think, I think it's better. It might, it might have been John who was echoing.
It might, it might have been me. I was typing to, uh, a person who was submitting comments on this. I, I was, uh, I'm going back and forth with them on standing, so, uh, we'll get to that at the right time. So I apologize. I didn't put mute before I was typing. So hopefully, uh, now it's better.
Okay, so Brian, please, uh, continue. Brian, are you still there?
Still here. Um, should I X out of this, Ally?
I think, yeah, I think your audio is okay. I think it's John who echoes. So we're good now that John is muted. You can continue.
Okay, so, um, I mean, that, that's the, the three exhibits that I have. We're, uh, uh, we're not asking for any bulk relief. If we look at Terry's report on zoning on page four, item one indicates that, uh, it's permitted use. Item two indicates, uh, no bulk variance requested. As Terry indicated, the applicant is not requesting, uh, or does not need any variance relief. Uh, that, that's, uh, also with respect to, uh, comment three with respect to parking. All of the units will provide the required parking.
I can jump to one sec. On the, of the plans, it says that the setbacks are ten and twenty-five, but then it just says ten on what is being proposed.
Which is typical on duplexes because you have a zero lot line in the middle.
That's what, I was just making sure that's what the twenty-five was. Okay.
There's ten on each side.
Now, Brian, how many parking spaces do you have? Four per unit or four per duplex?
We're, we're showing four per unit, which would be a, a minimum.
Uh, how do you have it? It's stackable?
Uh, it, it's showing, and there's three across the front and one set behind it, which is typical in the Oak Street Core area.
It's a stackable driveway. Okay. Yeah, oh, I see. Okay.
It, it's showing two only. I'm looking on Wadsworth.
No, the last, the long one is a double one. The long driveway next to it is two and a long one. The long one is a double.
Oh.
You, you have technically four, but one is a stackable.
Correct. There's two singles and then two in a stack driveway.
Yeah, I got confused with that also. I didn't know that's a driveway. Okay.
And, and, and that is typical in, in the Oak Street Core of the, the parking configurations.
And how wide is those driveway, the long one that goes in?
Uh, it, it would be nine by thirty-six.
Now, there's a, uh, there's, it's a walkway going down to the basement, okay, which is an apartment. Going through, if a car is parked there, which is typical seven, eight feet, we're putting a driveway on, on a walkway for a basement. I know it's been like that and, you know, my house is like that, but it bothers if you park a car there and if we're required to have four parking spots, you're literally parking on a, on a walkway towards the basement. To an apartment of three kids and family.
What, what we're showing, this is subdivision application, so we're showing typical dwelling units. Any of these units before they can get constructed to get a building, plot plans are submitted to the engineer's office and the engineer makes sure that there's adequate, the, the adequate parking to meet the need. That's why I indicated there's a minimum of four parking spaces. If, um, uh, there, there were bedrooms in the attic or extra bedrooms in the basement and you exceeded the number of parking spaces before, then we would have to provide. And you can see there's a difference. Uh, in front of the units where we've shown, so if we could add a fifth parking space to each of these, and if the configuration on the particular architecture doesn't work, where the driveway blocks the access to the basement, then the, the parking could be moved to accommodate that.
How many, how many parking spaces you have for the synagogue?
We're showing nine parking spaces for the, uh, the shul.
How big is the sanctuary?
Uh, it's less than eight hundred square feet, so no parking is required. So continuing in, in Terry's report. Um. Uh, the review comments, he, he indicates, uh, what I, uh, addressed previously is that there was a prior application for campus housing for Taskbar. Uh, and he indicates that, uh, possibly Taskbar may need to amend. That really doesn't affect this application. This is an application that was a, uh, a litigation settlement. Uh, we have nothing to do with this with Taskbar. It's our opinion that the litigation settled that and there's no site plan modification required. But if Taskbar needs to modify their site plan, then, then that would be their responsibility, not this applicant. Um, with respect to the comments that Terry requests on the survey information of the final plot, we would comply with his comments. Uh, it's, uh, six with respect to Woolsey, uh, Street, uh, recommending that it be squared off. We would satisfy the board engineer as a condition of approval that that's done appropriately. Um, he asks for, uh, an explanation on the stormwater facilities and there is stormwater that goes in the side yards and rear yards of some of these units. The normal procedure in Lakewood is that anything that's in the right of way would be maintained by Department of Public Works. And, and this applicant pays a one-time maintenance fee in order to accommodate that. Anything that's on the lots, there's easements that are given to all the affected lot owners and the affected lot owners maintain the stormwater system. Uh, the, the report asks for testimony regarding whether there's separate basement apartments. And, and there would be basements in these units, the same as there are in the Oak Street Core. It allows for, uh, separate basement apartments and to the extent that the future purchasers wanted to have a basement apartment, that would be permissible. Uh, he asked for testimony with respect to trash and recyclables and it would be roll-out cans that would be brought out and picked up by DPW. Uh, Terry does mention the one-time maintenance fee, uh, in the report, which would be twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars that the applicant understands and acknowledges. Um, there, there's really no variance relief, uh, to talk about, so I, I really don't have to provide justification, but the board should know with this application, the same as other applications, master plan of two thousand and seventeen. On page two, under background information, talks about all the growth. It concludes on page three that it is therefore important at Lakewood, uh, plan for residential development to house its growing population. And this certainly accomplishes that goal. The vision statement, uh, on page seven of the two thousand and seventeen master plan, uh, indicates encourage growth and development in appropriate locations, consistent with established land uses, and this certainly does this. And the fact that it's a, uh, litigation settlement that the township was a party of further goes to that. And the municipal land use law NJAC forty colon fifty-five D two, under the purpose of the act, is to encourage misdirection to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in a state in a manner which will promote public health, safety and morals and general welfare. And this application certainly accomplishes that as well.
Question, Chairman.
Brian, everything else in the report you agree to?
We will satisfy everything that, that, uh, is in the RVE report.
That, that was my question. Thank you, Chairman.
Do, do any board members have any questions for Mister Flannery? Um, we'll go tightly. Does, we have any emails on this? Anybody calling on this one for the public?
There is one comment, Mister Chairman. I will bring it up on my. If you'd be, one moment. Bear with me. Um, I just want to get the right. That, this comment is from, uh, a Mister Richard C I U L L O, five thirty-five Vaughn Avenue in Tom River. And his email address is, uh, Bryan County at gmail.com. And, uh, I'm going to, uh, open up the email. And, uh, I'll read it to the board.
Can you verify that this pertains to this, uh, application or he's just doing something? Cause their email address doesn't sound too kosher.
It does. Um, and I asked him for his name and he provided it and then, uh, I, I asked where standing was. And he said that he travels in the area and that the traffic, uh, affects him as a county resident and as a local resident. Uh, he, you know, he's in that area. In my opinion, under this format, appropriate to, to accept this comment from this individual, um, the board can consider that, that he, he resides in Tom River. However, Planning Board also has regional responsibilities, uh, and statewide responsibilities for it, uh, to its planning and development. And, and also, um, in, in addition to that, the, the individual advised me when I asked about it that he's been recognized by the zoning board and by the, uh, township committee. So, uh, his comments do seem to be, uh, addressed directly to this application and, and I'll put them up on the screen and I'll read them. Thank you.
John, before you read the comment, obviously, I, you know, you got to read it in, but I would object just as the standing for, for the objector, because he's not a, a Lakewood Township resident.
All right, Mister Pfeffer, I, I think your objection's been, I think, uh, you know, based on limitations of this format, uh, he did submit it in writing. The board will address the, uh, appropriateness of the comment, whether they want to respond to it, et cetera, but I, I think they should go in. So let me, um, thank you. Let me just, uh, make sure I get the right email up there. There we go. Now, what, what I'll do is I'll, I'll read this.
Could you make it bigger?
How's that?
Yeah, that's good.
I'll, I'll scroll through it as I go through it. First, let's face the facts and acknowledge that the entire Oak, Oak Street corridor is a disaster at this point. The volume of duplexes that have already been built with the accompanying basement apartments have made the area unmanageable and I question the wisdom of further contributing to an already impossible traffic flow. Forgetting for a moment the problems that this creates for busy families, I have serious concerns about emergency services, being able to quickly respond to a person in need. It is my opinion that it's only a matter of when, not if, that day will come that the delayed response will cost someone their life if it hasn't already. With that, application as best I can, I would ask the questions. One, all appearances on the max would indicate that nineteen duplex have an exterior primary entrance to the basement. That indicates that similar to every other duplex built in Lakewood over the last five years, the basement will be used as an apartment rental. Instead of welcoming nineteen families to town, you're approving an application that will welcome thirty-eight families. Am I correct in this assertion? Number two, assuming that the basement is to be used as a rental based on the average family size of five point six, this minor subdivision brings one hundred and thirty-seven more children into town, more specifically into a densely populated community situated in less than six acres of land. A, why is there no requirement for playground or open space for passive recreation or children? Are they going to be playing in the streets? B, Lakewood is unique in that the town relies mostly exclusively on private religious schools for head education for children. With the addition of so many children, as consideration be given to the influx of students into the private schools, in recent years, we have students turned away. Last year, there were girls with no school to attend in September. If memory serves me correctly, they finally found a school in December. Are their community, or, or are their commitments in the community ensure that spaces will be available in the coming years? Public schools are legally bound to provide for school aged children, but in a private school community such as Lakewood, I worry about the children having no school to call their home unless they attrition to public schools. So, um, the, the comments and, uh, Mister, I don't know if you want to have, uh, the applicant address them, if they think it's appropriate. It's a comment question.
I, I would, I would certainly like to comment on the, uh, on the email that was sent. First of all, he starts off saying the Oak, Oak Street Core is a disaster. While the, uh, DEP CAFRA permit disagreed with that, the governing body who zoned the property for this, uh, and actually presented the CAFRA application so that it would provide for, uh, all the items that are required as part of a CAFRA approval feel differently. And all of his comments relating to, I, it, it, I'm, I'm happy that he's concerned about the children in Lakewood getting into schools. Uh, but he's, he's talking about a by right application that's in accordance with the ordinance, which was recommended by the, uh, Lakewood Planning Board and adopted by the Township Committee, which I think have a far better understanding of what's required in Lakewood than this gentleman from Riseup Ocean County.
Brian, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Yeah, and then who's this?
This is Bruce.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It was actually, I was gonna ask, was there a traffic study? I was just figuring out how to get to the website when John started reading the email. I don't see anything here in the package. We have a hard copy. Is there considerations of traffic in your application?
Early on, uh, Terry indicated that a traffic statement was submitted. Uh, but I'd like to point out, and, and your attorney, uh, can, can verify this, with respect to off-site traffic on a conforming application in accordance with the zone, off-site traffic is not something that gets. Wait, when you look at this, uh, and, and I think, uh, a exhibit would, would show it better. On the Edgecombe Avenue through here, we actually.
Hold on a second. I'm gonna switch Mister Pfeffer. Hold on.
Let's get Brian up.
Do, do we have that on your screen?
We still have the email. I'd like to see the thing.
Let me minimize this. All right. I think if you want to look at Mister Flannery's screen, there's a setting, Mister Stern, on yours where only his frame, that might help you.
You can hover.
On me, if you hover your cursor on the, on the right part of the screen, you'll see the, uh, grid view, individual view, or who's speaking. Uh, so if you hit the active speaker video view, see what I'm talking about?
I see a bunch of.
Hover your cursor over the, uh, the corner, the upper right corner.
Okay, got it. Oh, I've got three options. What do I do?
The one on the left, active speaker video. If you press that when Mister Flannery's speaking, uh, he should put the entire screen with his image.
Okay, I did it, Brian. Go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, I have exhibit A two, which is the tax map and it shows our property highlighted. We are extending Edgecombe Avenue through here. So Edgecombe Avenue, which is now a dead end, uh, we're providing additional, uh, roadway. We're, we're improving Orgyle, connecting up to Woolsey and Clyde, so we're providing extra circulation so that these people, instead of every time they want to go somewhere, have to go down Vine and then go down to Oak and drive all the way around. We're providing internal circulation. So from my standpoint, it's a benefit traffic-wise, uh, and again, we're providing units in accordance with the ordinance with no, uh, variance relief requested.
So Brian, how do you, how do, I mean, at a certain point, though, all of these people, somebody coming from the north on Route nine, they gotta take a left somewhere, which means they're taking a left across oncoming traffic on Route nine. So, and if they can't, they gotta stop and they gotta wait. How do they take a left? And it's not just particular to this development and it's more of a, a global question. At, at what point does the system stop working and we, as the planning board, take this into consideration? Or is this something only that the Township Committee can? Or is this something only that the Township Committee can...
A participant has left the meeting.
Be cognizant of. You hear my question?
Yes. And the Planning Board in 2017 took up just that. Because what the Planning Board does when they do their master plan updates, and you can do that as often as you feel necessary, you make recommendations for what needs to be done. The problem with traffic in Lakewood to a large extent is that River Avenue in 1968, when John Franklin was on the board, he used to talk about when he was mayor in 1968, and he met with the New Jersey Department of Transportation, who said they were going to widen Route 9 because Route 9 needs to be widened. So that's since 1968, they didn't get to it. We do have a project where it's mostly going to be intersection improvements, but a lot of the backups that occur on Route 9 are because of intersection improvements. And that project is supposed to be started in the next year or two. So that'll help with the situation. The DOT has since the 90s known that we need a four-lane section on Route 9, and hopefully they're working on that. But in the meantime, what we need to do is we need to provide access so that vehicles have somewhere else to go so that they can avoid Route 9 the way I do, and I would think the way most of the board members do. You avoid Route 9 to the greatest extent possible. You indicated that these homeowners have to go to Route 9 and make a left. I...
No, no. Coming from the north, you know, it's... The people on the west side of Route 9 have to do this, risk their lives, and take a left across oncoming traffic with no control sections.
On Oak Street.
Coming from the south...
Broadway is going to have a traffic light. That's part of the DOT's improvement project that is coming... The New Jersey Department of Transportation tells us that's coming in the next two years.
John, could I interrupt? Could I interrupt?
Yeah.
Just a point of information.
Hold on one second. Is this Mr. Garfield?
Yes.
All right, you'd have to be recognized by Mr. Hersel. Mr. Hersel, you...
All right, you finished? Okay, Mr. Garfield, go ahead, please.
Yeah. On the... On Route 9, they were anticipating sometime in the future of widening it. Right now, they're only doing repaving, putting in new utility pipes. There will be some traffic lights. There's a question of money, and right now, I'm not even sure they got the money to do what they planned. So I don't think you should depend for quite a while on Route 9 becoming four. I'm on the Transportation Board.
I'm not planning... I'm not anticipating Route 9 becoming four lanes. What I indicated is that the New Jersey Department of Transportation has known since the 90s that Route 9 needs to be four lanes. And why Lakewood has been treated like a stepchild and hasn't gotten that.
Right.
But that's really not... It's not your main...
I don't think... I don't even think it's at the point that anyone can even talk about it anymore.
Well, I...
I'm serious.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, can I please intercede here for a second? Mr. Flannery made a comment, and I think this is in accordance with the law, that the zoning is determined through the master plan and the zoning regulations are adopted by the governing body. There's a presumption that the area is suitable for the development that's proposed. That's why we have zoning. And in a use variance case where somebody is asking for a use that is not permitted in the zone, the traffic impact from that use and whether it's compatible with the zone becomes a much larger issue. So Mr. Flannery is correct. In a sense, the zoning regulations were determined and made that the judgment that this area can handle this type of traffic. And handle it is where the beauty is in the eye of the beholder. But the governing body in its wisdom and the Planning Board in its wisdom, when it made the zoning, you know, the recommendations, master plan, they list all those things like how crowded Route 9 is versus the need for housing, you know, the density, whether duplexes should have basement apartments, etc., what is appropriate from the fabric of Lakewood. That decision has been made. Whether we like it, or we dislike it, whether we think it works, whether we don't think it works, that's... Those are the rules that have been handed down to us, and it's up to us to apply the facts of the rule. So while these are all good points, and I think they're all appropriate topics for debate, you know, that decision has more or less been settled. Now, Mr. Flannery also made a comment about the traffic study. On a local site, the traffic study is important in terms of in and outs, rights and lefts, whether the drive aisles are appropriate, whether stop signs in the nearby vicinity are required, whether there should be street, whether there should be crosswalks. All those things come into play. And, you know, I presume the traffic studies address that. Mr. Flannery can indicate whether it has. And... But, you know, as far as the overall, the macro impact on the community, I don't know if that's appropriate for consideration here.
John, may I interject?
Of course.
So duly noted, this is beyond our scope is what you're saying. Brian mentioned...
Not exactly.
Beyond the site.
Yes.
The email was talking about the impact on a macro level. My question was, like, do we consider the macro level? You're saying, given that the zoning is correct, it's kind of beyond the scope. My follow-up question was, Brian mentioned that the master plan is something we do when we want to do. And I actually took my little education course the other day, and it says we have to do it at least every 10 years. How does the master plan... Can we do it more often? And if so, how is it initiated?
Yes. There's... And I don't have the chapter inverted memorized. Mr. Vogt probably knows it better than I do. But the... Every 10 years, a reexamination is required. There's nothing that prohibits the board from instituting it or doing it on a more regular basis. And if you recall when we did our last master plan, I don't think that's anything anyone wants to do again anytime too soon.
Yeah, John, once again, Mr. Flannery, I want to be the chairman again.
But... And I think you can also look at specific areas. And, you know, if you recall when we did the golf course, that, you know, part of our master plan was essentially... The board said they wanted to see certain improvements to the roadway, and the court took some of those aside. But, you know, that's what we're dealt with. We did what we thought we could, and the court, you know, changed it a little bit. And now we're, you know, we have to deal with what not only the board said, not only what the governing body said, but also with what the court has said about that particular area anyway. So I'm getting off on a little bit of a tangent. But to answer your question, it can be done more often than once every 10 years.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Stern? I think Mr. Stern wants 10 uses enough.
Excuse me, Chairman?
Yes.
Just wanted to point out one other thing. If you look at the very end of our letter, this property is part of Transportation Improvement District 2, and they are making a $65,000 contribution towards traffic improvement. So indirectly, they are addressing off-site traffic.
Okay, thank you. Brian, I do go over. Wall Street, Edgecombe is staying unimproved? Will you paving it?
Edgecombe, we're improving as part of Phase 2.
And it's going to be improved?
It's going to be improved 32 feet wide, curb sidewalks, shade trees, shade tree and utility easement, everything according to township standards.
All roads around the whole property eventually will be improved.
Yes, to complete township standards. Curb sidewalks, shade trees, yes.
We agree. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for... I mean, for Brian, or anybody else?
I think when the middle... Yes, there are, Mr. Chairman. The individual who just sent me an email, he has... It's not even really a follow-up. It's a request that his question be addressed fully. And I'll put that up on the screen.
Which one? The original one you just read?
John, again, I'm reiterating my objection. Brian has addressed the email. These are items that have nothing to do with the application, and Brian's already addressed anything that's not to do with the application.
All right, I appreciate that, Mr. Pfeffer. But I think that, you know, this is a regional concern. I think these comments are directed to the development, and I think it's, you know, consistent with comments sometimes board members have made and other members. So anyway, I'm going to put this up.
I have another question, Mr. Jackson. Brian, the only other thing that Mr. Jackson had up on the email was some playground equipment. Open area or playground, is there any requirement? I know we have more than 25 houses. He's supposed to put in a recreation area.
You have to say...
Excuse me, Mr. Hersel?
Yes.
This is my name. Here's the question, and then I'll put his original question. Please make sure they address my concerns regarding passive recreation space for children. A critical issue that our group is working on with municipalities in Ocean County, the urgent need to provide space to allow safe play area for children. And, you know, I know in the original question...
What organization are they talking about that are working with municipalities? Which municipality and what organization?
In this format, we can't really send follow-up questions to him in real time. So I can't answer that. I can only tell you what he told me. But let me... I... One second. Bear with me. Here's a... I just want to put the original question back up there. Why is there no playground open space?
Number A. A call.
Two A and B, really.
Right. Two A.
The ordinance does not have a requirement for playground or open space. This property was part of the Oak Street Core, and every property owner in the Oak Street Core contributed to a fund that put Pocket Parks in aid for passive recreation areas for the Oak Street Core project. This property owner was part of that. There's nothing in the ordinance that says you need to have a playground. The ordinance says you need to set aside 5% of the area. That provision was taken care of when... The same as for every other property that developed in the Oak Street Core, when the Oak Street Core was developed. So to be, with respect to schools, I think that's just a silly comment. Obviously, the property is zoned for this. Lakewood takes very good care of their schoolchildren, and, you know, the regional concern for the private schools in Lakewood, I think, is a farce.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, if you're satisfied that he's answered the question...
I think it answers the question.
Has joined the meeting.
I don't think legally we can force any applicant to make sure that he has school for the kids. There's always public school, you know, if somebody wants to go there. And we can't force anybody, tell them which school to go to. I don't think that's a... Tell me, Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Hersel, can I interrupt for just a minute? I'm just trying to keep track. I'm trying to keep track of who we have on the call. Can whoever just called in as a call-in user, please identify themselves?
Yeah. Ally, me, Adam, my computer froze, so I called the number just so I could hear the audio. I could see the video on my screen, but it's frozen.
No problem, thank you.
Thanks. Ally, a question.
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Garfield, yeah.
What is the anticipated amount of children that would be in this development? It must be an anticipation of something. About 200, if you figure about five kids. Five to 100. I'll go along with 200. And how many square foot are in this parking lot?
Has left the meeting.
Because if you divide one into the other, there goes the six-foot area, but they're not going to have room even to play for a slideboard.
I would assume the board is aware of just further down Vine Street, the recreation area that's provided by the township, that provides plenty of room for everybody.
How far... I don't have it in front of me at the moment. How far down is the city playground?
City playground is probably within 1,000 feet.
All right. Mr. Garfield, I just want to interject here as well. This kind of goes to the idea that the zoning takes us into account. And I recall, because we got the board stuff a lot, and there was an ordinance that a development of over X number of units was required to provide a park. I imagine this doesn't trigger that requirement?
The ordinance doesn't say you're required to provide a park. It says you need to set aside 5%. The entire Oak Street Core contributed money to the township to purchase township properties in the area and contribute to recreation facilities in the area. So all of the property owners in the Oak Street Core contributed to a fund that was done by an entity to accommodate that.
All right. So in your view, that this 5% has been met?
Yes.
How do we know that hasn't been met like 10 times over by all different developers? How do we know that this particular parcel and the units proposed here have their allocation of the 5%?
It was all involved in the CAFRA plan, which was... The CAFRA application was prepared and submitted by the Township of Lakewood.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to subject the question regarding how many children is going to be created from this application? Not a reason to vote to approve or deny an application based upon people who are going to be living there. I'd like that to be on the record. I'd like you to confirm that.
No problem.
And, Mr. Pfeffer, if you'll note, I gave sort of a corrective charge to that, that I think the zoning takes into account that you're going to have households with children in them.
Okay. I think we addressed this email. We answered him. I don't think legally we have to provide any more than we provided. It's all separate units. And Ally, do we have anybody else, any other emails?
I don't have any other comments. If John can just forward me that latest email from... I'm sorry, I forget his name, from Rise Up Ocean County. I wasn't copied on that last one, just for the file.
Okay, thank you. And I'm closing it to the public?
No, I'd like to make one comment for the...
That's okay, you're not public.
One comment to make a comment.
Yeah.
There is a development, I won't say where at the moment, where they allowed X amount of square foot in the backyard. In the middle of the backyard ended up a wire holding up the telephone poles, making the backyard almost unusable. That's just a voice of comment. These things, I would think the builder could have anticipated, and someone knew, because they went up very quickly, the whole thing, that the backyard was going to become unusable. It's just a comment to think of.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure what to do with this application.
Okay. Whatever. I'm asking a motion on this application. I think we heard enough on this application.
Motion to approve this application.
Okay, was Mr. Meyer?
I second. This is Justin.
Mr. Justin, a second. Roll call, please.
Sorry, I'm texting with the board attorney.
Okay.
Seconded, and Mr. Meyer made a motion.
Mr. Meyer moved, and Mr. Flans, I'm second to approve.
Thank you. Mr. Garfield?
No.
Mr. Stern?
Mr. Chairman? I'm trying to ask a question. I guess I was on mute. I wanted to ask a couple of questions to Brian. I was on mute. I just realized, I don't know how I got on mute. I had a bunch of que... Not a bunch, but three, four questions that I think is very important.
Mr. Chairman, under the circumstances with this new format, I recommend that you...
Okay.
To let Mr. Sable give his questions and his comments. And I note that I got another comment from the gentleman from Rise Up Ocean County, which I'll read him.
Brian, what's going on with this sidewalk? Yeah, I'm going to do a quick sidewalk on Argyle, on the west side of Argyle.
On the west side of Argyle, whoever develops on the west side of Argyle will put the sidewalk in.
Can we require you to do it by law?
It's not our property. My answer to that would be no, because we've been through this with the Lakewood ordinance that says on our side is an onsite improvement, the opposite side of the road is an offsite improvement. And there has to be a reason that this development creates the need for the offsite improvements before the board can require it. So my professional opinion is no, it would be not needed by the ordinance. So my professional opinion is no, it would be not needed by the ordinance, and it would be inappropriate.
Terry or John, can you confirm that, please?
I agree with that, because this is a byright application. If they required variance approval, the board may have leverage. I don't see that here.
Okay, that answers one question. The shul, I would like to see a concrete pathway from the sidewalk to the shul. It cuts off by one of the parking spots. It's not a big deal, I think we can do it right near parking spot, I guess where it says E.
That's a good suggestion, and we would agree to accommodate that.
Okay.
What recommendation, Chairman, similar to the last application, I recommend giving the applicant flexibility to use asphalt as desired, or...
Not over here, everything else is going to be concrete, why can't we do concrete?
We're happy with concrete.
All right, that's fine, that's fine.
A shul, that doesn't need actual shul, sanctuary, doesn't need two access? Like a way out from the other side of the shul, legally?
To the extent that additional access is needed, as part of the process.
I can't hear you.
Somebody has to be clear. I think the answer to that, it's an inspection department. You won't get a building, the building code requires it, you won't get an inspection on that.
Right.
Okay. And it shows that the rabbi's shul has a finished attic, a third floor, additional two bedrooms, total of eight bedrooms. That would require additional parking, instead of usual five? Am I right, am I reading it right? Yeah, the third floor says bedroom seven, eight.
Eight bedrooms would need four parking spaces.
Eight bed, okay, so we don't, because we don't have a basement apartment? Okay, and when we make a motion, can we add that there needs to be a concrete pavement from the street till the basement entrance? A concrete pavement aside, not part of the driveway?
Mr. Meyer, will you include that in your motion? Thank you?
Yes.
And to the main house also, and to the main house.
All right, Mr. Hersel, before you go back to the motion, I, we did get a comment that came in from Mr. Seolo that I think the board should look at before it actually makes its ruling.
Okay, I don't mind, would you close it to the public?
I want to wait until Mr. Sable's finished, though.
Okay, I just want to double check, make sure that you heard me. Concrete walkway from the sidewalk on the street till the main house and to the basement, not affecting the driveway, the asphalt driveway, please.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Sable, did you finish?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you. This is the comment I got from Mr. Seolo in response to the, is everybody, can everybody see that?
Yeah.
Okay, so what it says is, I don't know if you can see the top part, because my screen is blocked.
No, I see it.
Okay, Rise Up is an organization that attends meetings in all municipalities, purely Lakewood, Tom's River, Brecken Jackson, where the bulk of developments occurring. He says, Mr., I think he's referring to Mr. Flannery said that the school was a farce. He says, how dare he? And then he says, this meeting format does not allow for the proper give and take, typically associated with planning board hearings, and emotional appeal to the developer to do the right and honorable thing and amend the application to include passive recreation space as a gesture of goodwill. The planning board cannot demand this amendment, but can request it. So I just wanted to pass that comment along to the board as well.
And again, John, this is Adam Pfeffer, just again objecting to his standing to make comments. Additionally, this meeting is being done in conformance with guidance that was provided by the DCA, and I believe we're abiding by all the terms and conditions. The notices, proper notices were sent, proper notices were put on the township website, the email address for all objections were given, and we have been given ample opportunity for any objector to voice their opinion. And I will point out that the only person who's objected to this application is someone who does not reside in Lakewood Township.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also just like to clarify. I don't believe Brian's comments of being a farce were in relation to the recreation area. I believe Brian addressed that by saying that the, there's a complex within 1,000 feet of the development. I think he, he made his comments of the farce in regards to schooling.
Yeah, I thought, I thought that's what I said. I might have misspoke.
Okay.
On the paper that we got, it said unfinished basement. I guess our vote will be on unfinished basement, all of the papers say that way, all the plans.
This is a subdivision application, so the subdivision application subdivides the lots into the 19 duplex lots that are required. And then the applicant can build on those 19 lots, what's permitted by the ordinance. And again, this is a byright application asking for no relief. So the subdivision, the fact that we show architectural plans on a subdivision is more for the board to get a feeling of what the applicant's intention is, rather than to lock the applicant into building exactly what's shown. Every application that's submitted, after it's approved, the buyers come in, the buyers want something a little different, and a house gets built as long as it conforms with all the ordinances and codes, that's what gets built. This is a subdivision application, not a site plan for each duplex lot.
Right, and based on that, we think, and based on how you submitted it all, we're going on unfinished basement.
Well, that was represented to us.
Let me make it clear that this applicant is asking to be able to build units the same as every other unit in the Oak Street Core, which includes basement apartments if the future buyers want to buy them. So the application is not for unfinished basements. The application is to allow the subdivision of this property so that the future buyers can build duplex units in accordance with the ordinance and the codes and all the other factors.
Correct, I just wanted to clarify that, thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm closing it now, the second time to the public. Mr. Meyer, you made a motion originally, do you want to continue with your motion?
Mr. Chairman, could you please bear with me for one moment? I just want to check something. Bear with me.
Terry, can I interrupt meanwhile?
Mr. Sable?
Terry?
Yes.
So usually, a finished attic, I don't think we've ever, any of the duplex, because usually they don't come with a finished attic. Anything would change as far as zoning or planning that they are putting in a finished attic, additional two bedrooms?
I don't know if it would change the site plan approval. If an application went for building plot plan and additional spaces, or not spaces, I'm sorry, if additional bedrooms were shown in the attic, that would contribute towards the permitted parking count, and it may change the number of parking spaces. I think if I remember, the fifth parking space is triggered by a ninth bedroom. They turn in plans, for argument's sake, that that shows six bedrooms on the first and second floor, and then there's two in the basement and one or two in a finished attic, that may trigger an additional parking space. But that will be determined at plot.
Chairman, I've been very important. Mr. Chairman, I checked what I was looking for, Mr. Vod, or Mr. Flannery. The original review letter said there was a variance request for requirements for the rabbi's residence. I don't see any other variances associated with the application, is that accurate?
That's our understanding, John.
To your point about attics and about basements, et cetera, Mr. Flannery is correct, and he's, they're looking for subdivision approval. Now, the board, however, does have the right to limit the approval since they're seeking variances. And one of those limits could be no basement apartments or no attic apartments, in the no way, shape, or form recommending that. And I think that was a problem, because frankly, it's kind of a tenuous, you know, the rabbi's residence really has nothing criteria for basement apartments. But I don't want to sit here silent, saying that the board does not have the authority or the ability to limit the extent of the approval when they're seeking variance. I do think it would, no. Considering the variance has nothing to do with basement apartments. I just want to bring that up and not be silent.
And one last point, we have to ask the applicant to finish the sidewalk in front, connecting Argyle to Clyde. It cuts off right before the driveway. I think we need to continue a concrete driveway, a concrete sidewalk past the driveway, connecting to Clyde, or till the end of their property. I don't think, on the map, it's not showing, and I think we have to request that additional 40 feet, 30 feet.
We would agree to that.
It's in concrete, not asphalt, after the driveway.
Concrete sidewalks.
Till the end of this property.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, and back to Mr. Meyer. You made the motion, do you want to continue making the motion?
I made the motion with all the proper sidewalks, all the proper sidewalks, that's it.
Whatever Mr. Sable said, will the extra sidewalks match from concrete? You agreed to it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Flansbrough, you made, you seconded, you agree to second it now?
And I'll second that now, yeah.
You seconded. Ally, please make a roll call.
Mr. Garfield?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Sable?
Yep.
Mr. Flansbrough?
Yes.
Mr. Hersel?
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson?
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson, you're muted.
Wrong? Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You want to go over the sidewalk issues, or you have it written down?
I have sidewalks from the roadways to the front entrances, as well as the basement entrances, and those sidewalks are to be independent of the driveways, as well as adding concrete sidewalk from Argyle to Clyde.
Correct, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, approval of minutes? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ally?
Yes.
From the street till the shul entrance as well, concrete pavement.
From the street to the shul. Okay, and I heard a couple of motions on the minutes, I'm going to say approved.
Yeah.
And we had bills.
Okay, one second, before we go there. I just want to make sure, going down the line, we have another meeting tomorrow. I know we usually don't have two meetings, or we want to catch up. We have a meeting tomorrow. Mr. Stern, are you available tomorrow?
Let me pass for right now, and let's see if we can have a quorum.
Mr. Meyer, are you available?
I'm not available until after 7:00.
Okay. Mr. Isaacson, are you available? Okay, I will try to be available. Mr. Sable, are you available?
I will try, it's a short night, looks like.
Yes.
Tonight, I also thought it was going to be a short night.
Tonight, it's here.
Right. You have three hours, working both long ago, when you don't see each other. Okay, and Mr. Flansbrough? Mr. Flansbrough, are you there?
Yes, I'm available, yeah.
You're available. So Ally, are you counting, who do we have positive for sure?
Um, one, two, three. Mr. Garfield, are you available tomorrow?
I'm sorry, Mr. Garfield, I don't see your picture.
It's okay, my wife forgets me too. Yes.
Okay, so that's four, I think, and Jake after 7:00, and Bruce and maybe.
What else do we have on the board?
How big is your agenda tomorrow? Same size as tonight?
It is two extensions, two minor subdivision extensions, they should be quick. Those are usually 10 minutes a pop. And then we have a courtesy review for a township community center. I muted John, see how much better it is?
Oh, okay.
Sorry, guys.
Tomorrow night really could be an hour.
Tomorrow night really could be an hour, I'm hoping.
Okay, I will commit to an hour, and we go past that, all bets.
Okay, well, Mr. Meyer said he can come at 7:00 o'clock, right?
Oh, there we go.
Right, so if we need him to swap off, then you are...
Okay, I can commit, God willing, to 6:00 to 7:00 tomorrow.
Thank you.
From 6:00 to 7:00, we have five, Ally?
Yes.
Ally, Mr. Ratzik and Mr. Renner have not made themselves available?
I thought Mr. Renner would be here. Mr. Ratzik, I have to check, he may have told me he was not available. I don't have my notes on me, I'm sorry. I honestly, I thought everyone would be here tonight, I'm not sure. But there may have been confusion on the fact that we had a meeting tonight and tomorrow.
Right, I just want to make sure we have a quorum tomorrow.
Mr. Sable, yes, the five includes you, hopefully. But I can call Mr. Ratzik and Mr. Renner and rope one of them in tomorrow night.
All right, let us know if somebody else can come, and if not, I'll make my head. Or Mr. Isaacson, Ally.
Okay.
Or Mr. Isaacson.
And the only thing is, I want to make sure that Ally gets paid, so approval of bills.
Thank you.
Second, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Yeah, good night, everybody.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone, good night, John.
John? John?
Yes.
I spoke to a zoning board member in Woodbridge Township today, and he told me that they're doing next week a board meeting where everybody's going to sit apart, six feet, social distance, but they're doing it in, I guess, a courtroom or open space.
I don't think we're ready to do that in Lakewood for a lot of reasons, even if another town is doing that. So I think we should just go along this, see how things evolve. And I don't think the committee is ready to let the planning board meet in Lakewood. I think that would not be what we see.
The direction I was given is that the committee specifically said the municipal building would not be open in May for public meetings. So they don't want us there.
We can get a simple hall somewhere in town.
So this will... We don't have any simple halls in town, come on.
I forgot.
We represent Woodbridge, and we're not real happy about the idea ourselves. I can talk about it later, but it's complicated.
Terry, bring your mask tomorrow.
I'm bringing it to Woodbridge if I end up going, that's for sure.
You know, you know what's wonderful about this format? I think we should keep doing this, because like, I don't know, around 7:30, I texted my wife, I said, I'm starving up here, and she brought me up some nice nachos and dip. So I don't get that kind of service up on the day it's at the board.
What time?
I tell my wife I'm going to be home in 15 seconds, this is great.
And to learn, it might be Jillian and not me, or it might be both of us for a while, because we have another case in another town, and I don't know who's going to do what. So, but that's at 7:00 PM, so we might be finished with this by then.
Hopefully.
Okay, Mr. Garfield?
Yeah, and Ally?
Yes. Do me a favor, if you can, I made all these papers, some of them duplicate, and if you could put the SD number, like you do when we're sitting back there on the dais, it would help me a lot.
Unfortunately, none of the...
I have three copies of the same thing.
Unfortunately, none of the paperwork is filtering through me. It's coming directly from your applicants.
Okay.
On that note, why don't we get Terry's review printed out?
I had asked Sarah to mail them, perhaps she forgot?
Yeah, she knows, I didn't get it either. You have it online, but the door presented...
All right, hold on, logistics, I mean, we're really not having a board discussion. Ally, is this still being recorded? How's this working?
I'm not in charge of it, so I assume it's probably still going.
Okay, so, I mean, Mr. Garfield, if you have questions about that kind of administration stuff, you should probably call up Ms. Morris, and she should be able, you know, help you with that. I know, I know, we're all online now, but so is everyone else in the world, and this isn't really an official meeting right now.
Sounds good. Good night.
All right, good night, everyone. Thank you.
Everyone, thank you, have a good night.